And the mics are on. Okay, we were just in recess. We got everybody in the building. We've already had the invocation and the pledge. So, we will go into the first item. Also, I'll go ahead and say it now. There's so many people here, and we think they're here for item 11 and 12. So, we're going to have Virginia Ross go first, and then the call to the public. So, that call to the public will not be the time to speak on item 11 and 12. But for everyone's convenience, since they all came here, we're going to then move items 11 and 12 ahead of everything else, so that we can get to it, so that everybody doesn't have to wait through the whole thing. With that being said, we will tell Virginia Ross about the election progress.
Good morning, Vice Chair Sertie, Supervisors, and Staff. Virginia Ross, Elections Director. With an update, voter registration closed last night for the general election. Early voting started this morning, and early ballots will be mailed out today. Poll worker training is going on for another two and a half weeks, and we are receiving high marks from the poll workers for the revamped curriculum and hands-on training. We have also been in front of media responding to their questions about improvements that we have put in place.
Virginia, excuse me. So, we have IT problems. We have no audio. So, we're going to go into another recess, and so IT can get that going. So, we're going to come back to you again. So, I said this is important to everybody in the whole county, so we want everybody to be a part of this. So, we're going to go back into recess. And we're good to go, so the recess is over.
Okay, I will thank you.
Maybe start overs for the people that missed that.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Sertie, Supervisors, Virginia Ross, Elections Director. Voter registration has closed for the general election. That was closed as of last night. Early voting started this morning at 8:00 a.m., and early ballots are being mailed out today. So, poll worker training is going on for another two and a half weeks, and we are receiving high marks from the attendees for the revamped curriculum and the hands-on training. We also have been in front of media responding to questions about our preparations for the general election. So, the county did practice, and I emphasize the word "practice" and "rehearse," for a mock poll that was conducted by county staff with invited supervisors and staff. However, I have been informed by multiple sources throughout the county that there is some incorrect information about spoiled ballots. We are not tabulating spoiled ballots. You can't tabulate them. They're spoiled for a reason. The timing marks are crossed out. So, we are concerned about some continued, in this case misinformation, and remind everyone that the Elections Department and the Recorder are your trusted source of information. We're going to give you the correct information. And we do have observers, political observers, that are appointed by the parties that will be coming to view the elections process, both at the Recorder's Office and at the Elections Department, when we start on Friday, receiving early ballots from the Recorder's Office, and Monday when we have the early board. The observers have already been informed that they will have to sign a code of conduct while they come in. So, there are certain rules that people need to observe, and if they have questions, they need to direct those questions to supervisors who will answer their questions. And we also ask that, in some cases for polls, observers that they review the Poll Worker Manual before they go to the poll. It helps to have informed observers, so people understand what it is they are observing, because we have had people think they see something, they ask a question, we clear it up, and find out it's part of the process. We have had our internal logic and accuracy test that was conducted with the Democratic and Republican political party chairs on October 6th, and the county did post a website interviewing them about the process, and they were pleased with the process. We did have the Secretary of State on Monday came and conducted the logic and accuracy test. We did conduct the test. However, during the test, we did discover two minor issues, which I would like to bring to everyone's attention, that are, however, inconsequential to overall election administration. We found one congressional race with the candidate names that are rotating where, in this instance, they should not be rotating, and we immediately contacted the affected candidates. We spoke to all of them, and they have decided that we should not take any further action on this rotation issue, as it has no impact to the vote or election administration or anything else. Listening to the Spanish-language translation that is generated by the program, software program, there was a tiny pronunciation issue. So, this would only impact a visually impaired Spanish-speaking voter who needed to listen to the ballot and would need assistance marking the ballot. The inspectors will contact, so the mitigation would be, the inspectors will contact us if they need a Spanish-language translator onsite, and we do have people positioned around the county that would be there in a timely manner, so we don't really feel that that would be any issue as well. So, yesterday, we went ahead and reviewed all the ballots again. We ran a full set of ballots through the tabulators, and we found no issues. So, to continue to fortify our election procedures, all activities are being performed in teams, and the snag board is now going to be composed of myself, Geraldine Rohl, and Donna Diaz, who's the Chief Deputy Recorder, and Geraldine Rohl is Deputy County Attorney, and myself as Elections Director and Certified Elections Officer. And with that, I will take any questions.
I want to come back to the mock vote that we had with the 12 ballots, and yet, we then got, started getting contacted, that the two ballots did get counted, the two flawed ones, and that we tried to cover that up. Those are pretty serious allegations. How did that even get started? Why was there even a controversy there? Do you know?
No, I don't know, because everything counted. The, what we counted and what we tabulated, it came back. It equaled out. So, again, it was a mock poll. We had staff there. That staff, they're not trained poll workers. It was a rehearsal. It was a practice. We didn't find any issues. Everything tabulated properly.
Okay, so, I came and I voted. Since I didn't RSVP, my vote was in a provisional ballot. Was it one of the 12?
Yes.
Okay. So, that was a good test to see how provisional get into there also. And also, that could have been very important, what you brought up about the non-rotating candidate, how they saw that one. But that candidate is okay with it and should be fine.
All the candidates have said they are fine, and they have directed no further. They don't want any further action taken.
All right. And that's good that we got out ahead of that. Any, anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Director Ross. Someone from my office attended the mock election. I didn't attend it, and sort of made a list of things that he observed. And so, some of the processes that you're working out, this was sort of a practice, right? The mock election?
Yes, Vice Chair Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh. It was a practice, mostly for staff, so they will be able to try to answer questions if anything comes up with the poll workers.
Okay. So, when the ballots arrived at the Elections Department for the Receiving Committee, was the count off?
No, the count was not off. The count was fine. It was just the way it was listed on the report. Again, that was staff, new staff, as I've explained to everyone. Because of the turnover in the Elections Department, we have all new, pretty much all new staff, and this was a way for us to rehearse, and not put people out on Election Day who haven't had that training, who haven't gone through those mock elections and rehearsals, which is why I felt it was important for everyone to rehearse. Everything we're doing, I'm having everybody put through the paces and rehearse, because they need to have that experience before Election Day.
Yeah, it's good. Like an NFL team, you don't go to Super Bowl without lots of practice. So, that's good. So, it's important that, you know, if there are errors found, this is the time to correct them. You're identifying errors in the process during this mock election. Is that accurate?
Vice Chair Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh, yes. If we have any sort of logistical issues, I wouldn't call it an error as much as I would say. It's the logistics and practicing. If you haven't done it before, having to understand the process of what you do, and going back and reviewing that Poll Workers Manual, understanding that the inspectors, for which Pinal County, very happy to say, we have quite a number of experienced inspectors, some of whom have been working elections in Pinal County for 20 years. I did go and attend one full inspector class, and they did come up to me. They were very pleased with the updated training and what they were receiving, so I do feel confident that any sort of, as we say, snags in the process, that we're going to have all of that worked out.
And the green slips, it's my understanding, there's something about green slips, and there were more green slips than there should have been arriving at the Elections Department, because there was a previous count. Is that right? A previous trial run?
Supervisor, Vice Chair, the green slips, we are only using, so we made a change in the process, and one of the persons at the mock election misunderstood the instructions of how we were using them. So, I sorted it out, and there was no issues with that.
Good, okay. The, there were cloth bags labeled spoiled ballots. Are there different bags for spoiled ballots and not regular ballots? How are those handled?
Thank you again, Vice Chair Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh. Yes, we are going to have a number of secure bags, so we're going to have the regular ballot box, and we will have a bag for surrendered and spoiled. So, that would be surrendered early ballots, and then there's a bag for provisional ballots. So, we want to keep everything separate, so the workflow that we've worked out aligns up with what we need to do on Election Night.
Okay. And in the mock election, the spoiled ballots were put in the regular box by accident. Is that accurate?
I believe that may have happened, yes, but that's not part of the procedure, and we all understand that there is a separate bag, and the inspectors and the ballot judges know which bag to put the different ballots.
Okay. And then my employee reported to me that in this practice session, there was some discussion among the Elections workers on what the correct procedure should be. So, there was some discussion, and in this practice, we were able to correct that, and I think he even asked you, how, if an error occurs, and I'll ask you today. So, in the real election, if an error occurs, how is it traced? How is it tracked, so that later on, if someone has a question, they can go back and identify the error and how it was fixed? What is the procedure for that?
So, thank you, Vice Chair, Supervisor. We do have an audit trail logs that we are building, and we do have a master audit log. So, we do have, we will be taking all of the chain of custody forms from, to and from the polls, and we will do more than one count. So, before the ballots are brought back to election, tabulating on Election Night, the marshal and the inspector, who are bipartisan, need to balance before they leave and before they send the ballots back to us. So, that process, that's always been the process. They have to balance. Then we take all the information, and we enter it into the master audit logs, which we will be working on to balance before we prepare the canvas.
Okay. And then finally, this mock process sort of emulated the real process. So, even the people voting in the mock election had to produce identification. Is that correct?
Yes, Vice Chair Sertie, Supervisor, that is correct.
Okay. And then, so, so this was, to the greatest extent possible, a dry run of a real election?
Yes, Vice Chair Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh. That is testing the Poll Worker Manual is part of what we also wanted to test, because we do have the new people, and they are going to have to be able to answer questions. So, the only way they can be able to answer questions is if they themselves go through the process.
Okay. And the only other concern that my employee had was when, whatever these green tabulation papers are, when the error was discovered, an employee put them in their pocket, which was, it's not a real election, and I don't know what those are for, but that seemed a concern that, hey, even in a mock election, maybe we should focus on the, how to identify errors and properly track them in the real election. So, I want to praise you for doing the mock election and identifying these problems and making corrections as you go along, and I fully expect that you're going to run a great election in November. Thank you.
Supervisor Goodman?
No, I'm good, and I appreciate what you've done there. You know, there's a lot that we have to overcome because of things that have happened in the past, and so, I think what the process that we're doing here, having you come in regularly, Virginia, and I appreciate your willingness to take this challenge on and help us move forward in these difficult times right now. And I appreciate the efforts of both the Republican and the Democrat side that have been working with you, poll workers and observers and everything else of that nature, to help move this thing in a positive direction, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Virginia, I want to ask you one more thing. A lot of people are still on the early voting rolls, and they'll be receiving ballots. There's been a trend lately to hold on to that ballot, then walk it up to the polls on Election Day and drop it in, and that slows everything down, right? You have, what, three choices? You can mail it in immediately, you can walk it to the polls early and drop it in, which lets it be counted ahead of time, or drop it the day of the election. Can you explain those three and what that does to us?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Sertie. So, as you say, early voting started today. They can vote in person early. They will receive their early ballot in the mail. They can choose to mail it back, take it to the Recorder's Office, put it in, if they want, the inside drop box. So, on Election Day, we do have a early voter bag. So, that's going to be in front of the inspector, and it's a secure bag with all the seals and locks on it, so people don't wait in line. You don't have to check in or wait in line. You can just walk up, show the inspector your ballot, put it in the bag. Now, some people still want to vote in person. So, what they can do is either leave their ballot, early ballot, at home and check in and vote in person, or they can bring their early ballot and say, "I want to vote in person." They can surrender their early ballot. So, that's where we have that bag of surrendered ballots, and they will mark "surrendered" on the ballot, so we know it's surrendered, and then the person will just go ahead and vote normally on Election Day.
Okay, because I know there is some confusion on that. Anyone else?
Just one more question. The question's been posed to me, Ms. Ross, about the hand count of ballots. Can Pinal County pull off a 100% hand count of ballots rather than the machine? I know it's a hypothetical, but if necessary, could we do 100% hand count rather than machines?
And these are counting machines, not voting machines.
Correct.
Right. We don't use voting machines. We do use machines that tabulate the votes.
Correct. Thank you, Vice Chair Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh. I mean, certainly, if you want people, it's possible, theoretically possible, but logistically, I would say, even when we do the sample hound count after the election for the primaries, somebody made an error, and they had to go back and start all over again. So, you just think about the logistics of that and the timeframe to get it done, and where would you do it, and so on and so forth. Then, we're expecting a recount anyway, because of the percentage has been lowered by the legislature to one-half of 1%, and then, how would you even accomplish that right after that either? So, I think, sure, I mean, we can talk hypotheticals, but I think trying to implement something like that, that would, that would take a very long discussion.
If counting machines failed, for whatever reason, a hand count would be necessary?
So, the county, thank you, Vice Chair Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh. The county does have a backup plan. In the case of where, I do know of a county, at one point, their machine went down. We have three. They had to take it to another county and use their machines. So, that's the backup plan.
All right, thank you.
30 or 40 years ago, were they all counted by hand?
I'm not sure, Supervisor Sertie. I don't know.
All right. Okay, if nothing else, that is it. There's no vote on this, so thank you for the update.
All right.
And we'll move on to...
Mr. Chair, real quick, if I could, in regards to this. I know that we were looking into the certification issues. That's where the big problem, it appears, is that whether or not these counting machines are certified or have the proper certification. And I know that our county attorney's office was looking into that, and so, I'm hoping that at some point, they come back with a report on that and kind of give us an update. Yes, our attorney.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Goodman, you are absolutely correct. In fact, I have a draft that we are working on as we speak. So, hopefully, we will have that reviewed by the county attorney, and maybe even by next meeting, next week, we will be able to discuss that with you.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. So, we're going to go on to call to the public, and remember, this is not about items 11 and 12. We're going to get to that shortly. I do have some forums already. I have Joe Orton.
John?
John Orton, I'm sorry.
My name is John Orton. I'm a PC in Pinal County. Our district is Pecacho. All of my constituents, or not my constituents, all of the people are basically, we have no golf course communities. It's all farmers, ranchers, hard-working people. I appreciate the honesty that this board had at the August meeting, right after our primaries, when the board, or Mr. McClure, actually, made the comment that most people in the county don't realize that we have divided the Elections Department. That was an eye-opener, because I didn't realize that. And when I went out after the primaries, as you all know, we had national media coverage on what was going on here in Arizona and Pinal County, and as I'm going door-to-door talking to people, the comments that I received, and when I, you know, Jesus says, "Seek the truth, and the truth will set you free," telling the people in my precinct what was going on, that we have the county recorder, who handles the mail-out ballots and the drop boxes, and then we have the Election Department, which is run by the, according to the flow chart here, is run by the county manager, or is under the county manager. Well, my people are very upset about that. You know, one of the comments I got is, "We have an unelected bureaucrat in charge of Elections Department? County manager?" They don't like the fact that the board has separated this. I expressed my concern, because I'm in Mr. McClure's district, and I expressed that at the last PC meeting, and he is actually coming to my house to address some of these farmers and stuff. This next week, he'll be there. But it's, you know, when they, when they heard that we're on our third Elections Director in less than two years, from the 2020 cycle to the midterms, that's another point, that they were very, you know, the comments, and I got more than one on this, "The BOS fired the wrong person. They should have fired the county manager instead of firing..." You know, the county Elections Director had only been there a few months. I mean, what? Who's vetting these people? You know, I mean, you guys need to hear this, because these are the people that make up our county, and that's...
Okay. We've hit three minutes, so please wrap it up.
Okay. On the audit, Yvonne Hutton-Politzer. You don't, you don't ask the FBI to investigate themselves. If we're going to do an audit, he runs everything through a machine. I mean, there's YouTube videos on it. You can see him. He's done these, and he did it in Maricopa County. He's the person that should be performing this.
Thank you. Boots Hawks.
Members of the board, thank you very much for this opportunity.
And we need to state your name and basically where you live.
I'm going to. I'm Boots Hawks. I'm the president and founder of Conservative Freedom Lovers Casa Grande. We now have chapters in Florence, in Coolidge, and in Maricopa. We are over 600 members now, strong. And I come to you today asking you to start brainstorming. I know this is too early right now to do anything for this election coming up, but for future elections, we need to stop the questions. We need to stop the suspicions, and the only way we're going to do that is by hand counting the votes. And to sit here and say it would be difficult, there's many things in life that are difficult. But if we set our minds to it, if we brainstorm, if we work at it, we could become an example in Arizona, because we have excellent people in this county right here, and I appreciate every one of you. Mistakes are made. Everybody makes mistakes. He who doesn't make a mistake casts the first stone. That's what I say, because we all make mistakes, but we have to alleviate as much of those as we can, and by doing proper hound counting and verifying it, we can make that happen. But we need to take the suspicion out of elections, because that is ruining our elections. It's ruining the confidence of the people. And right now, our leaders need the confidence of the people. We need that to make our country go forward and stay the nation that it is. There's a reason why "we, the people" was the first words written, because it belongs to "we, the people," and it's not "we, the machines." Let's get these machines out of this. Every one of them, no matter what you do, can be rigged. I'm not saying that every one of them is rigged, but I'm saying the possibility is there, and the people know that. We need to stop it, and we need to stop it now. Not for this election. It's going to be impossible. But there's an election coming up in 2024. Let's make that one perfect, and we can. We've got the brain power here to do it. So, bring your officials together, bring community members together, community leaders together, and let's work this out and make it happen. And I'm putting that on you guys. Thank you.
Catherine Reed.
My name is Catherine Reed, and I live in Casa Grande. And I did send out an email to all the supervisors. I was shocked that I only got one reply. I'm also shocked that not everyone is here. When it comes to frustration, when it comes to trust, when it comes to what's happening with our elections, I've done recounts with machines. With machines, they can be messed with. With the ballots, they can cause problems. I have done this numerous times, and I agree with Boots. We need hand-count ballots. It went, we've had them for decades and decades and decades. Other countries, out of, I think it's 200 and some countries, the majority of them do hand-count ballots. Why are we relying on machines? It doesn't make any sense to me. Machines can be manipulated, and right now you've got a lot of voters that are concerned, very concerned, especially with what happened last in August and going forward. There are many, many voters that will step up and help, and you really need to look at alternatives. And sometimes it's going back to the way things have always been. That's my two cents.
Thank you. David Coward.
My name is Dave Coward from Gold Canyon, and I'm here just to thank Virginia Ross and her new team. I'm an inspector in my precinct on the polls. I have recently gone through the training, and it is light years better than we've had before, so I want to express that. I'd also recommend that everyone on the board of supervisors and their staff should also go through that training so you understand the process. I am a voter that is confident in the tabulation machines that count our ballots. As a former county chair for the Democratic Party, I've been involved in the audit process of preparing those machines and making sure they're accurate before and after the election. So I just want to let you know there are voters out there that agree with the tabulation process, and I don't think the hand count of any ballots is even feasible. This ballot we're about to have in November is a page and a half. It's two pages, one front and back, and another page, one front. It's going to take a long time for people to even vote those ballots, and if you have to count every item on that ballot for each ballot, it would take a massive amount of manpower to make that happen in a timely manner. So again, I just want to let you know that there are voters that do agree with the current process and applaud you for your efforts. I was also contacted by the auditor that's doing the audit right now, so I know he's out there doing his work and doing his due diligence, so I applaud those efforts as well. So, thank you very much.
Okay. That's all the slips that I have. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? You already went once.
I have something to add to what was just said.
Natasha, is that...
I started...
No, we, yeah, we can't do that. Otherwise, this will go on forever, so...
Roberto Ravalis, resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman, our nation and our world are living in perilous times. Sixty years ago this month, our universe faced nuclear annihilation by an autocratic Soviet despot. Today's threat is again from another dictatorial autocrat. The undoubted existential threat to humanity becomes even more disastrously complicated by an America and Arizona at war with itself. I lived through the frightening Cuban Missile Crisis and witnessed the massive mobilization of our military and its deployment to our southeastern states facing Cuba. I remain grateful for our nation that stood together at that time. Today's threat, however, becomes even more frightening because we are a nation divided by incomparable power-seeking partisans who have deluded the once Grand Old Party of my grandfather. We begin this week with a solemn responsibility of voting for leaders who can be trusted with ensuring the integrity of our foundational exercise of the vote. The unvarnished fact is that we face a dedicated minority of untruthful Republican partisans who are committed to gaining power through misinformation, immoral, and violent means. An election-denying Republican candidate for Secretary of State who would be responsible for overseeing and administering the security of elections for the state. This is a person who supported the violent insurrection of January 6th. Another, an election-denying proponent of the big lie, running for governor in tandem with other proponents of using every means to change the outcome of elections if their team does not prevail at the ballot box. We must elect leaders who genuinely believe in the foundation principles and moral values of our democratic republic, or we risk losing our unique experiment in self-governance. We must participate in and honor the results of our elections that are the envy of all nations. We cannot give in to the thugs that violently attempted to overthrow our government on January 6th at a place where I worked for 24 years. And we must not surrender our votes to those who conspire to falsely present themselves as elected presidential electors. Instead, let's emulate the courageous lifelong Republican Rusty Bowers who correctly described those violent disloyalties as, quote, "That's fascist, and I am not a fascist," unquote. As a genuine oath keeper, both in my military and public service, I urge you board members and my fellow Arizonans, defend our Constitution, resist the fascists among us, reject Mark Fincham, reject Blake Masters, reject Carrie Lake. Vote as if the lives of the Grand Old Party and our state depend on it because your political party and our nation both depend on your vote for our democratic republic. Thank you, Mr. Acting Chairman.
Anyone else?
I'm Noel Rec from Casa Grande. I trust Virginia Ross, and I have no concerns about the election. It's a shame that after several months, the subject of Call to the Public and the relationship between the supervisors and their constituents remains a point of contention. I believe a positive relationship and an improved Call to the Public is entirely possible with the exception of one supervisor. Today, I must address the vile and unprofessional comments directed at me at the last meeting. My comments and questions were meant to remind someone of the guiding principles of personal behavior and conduct, discipline, and appropriate and unacceptable behavior. Being pointed, they obviously got under someone's skin. They were not worthy of the unprofessional attack that followed. First, being labeled as an ass and a hypocrite because I choose not to stand for the invocation is disgusting and unworthy a member of this board. That is my decision and my decision alone, a decision that shouldn't be questioned by anyone in this room, especially a member of the board. I could be agnostic, an atheist, a member of any religion who believes in the separation of church and state, or someone who prefers to take that time in silent contemplation. The board's disclaimer regarding the invocation states that no member of the community is required to attend or participate. The hypocrisy of that attack is self-evident. Next, the word "purport" means to claim, particularly to falsely claim something. I do not purport that I was a career teacher and coach. That is a fact. I was honored to be a career educator in the top district in the state of Colorado, Cherry Creek School District Number Five, highly regarded by an estimated 10,000 students who walked through my classroom door or engaged with me on the athletic field. I know all about ADHD and the strategies used to deal with them. I'd be willing to share those strategies if indeed applicable and needed. Being accused of indoctrinating my students seems to be an ideological reference to the boogeyman of critical race theory and Marxist progressive indoctrination, something I would expect to hear at a Trump rally or a meeting of the Oath Keepers where indoctrination actually occurs, not in this assemblage. Knowing nothing about me to disparage my teaching abilities, to imply that a school board should be leery of me is both baseless and inane. I don't come here to spew hateful language of which I was accused. The hateful spewing at the last meeting didn't come from me. I come here to speak out against that which I believe to be wrong and praise what I believe to be right. I believe my comments have been highly effective, as exemplified by my developing relationships with members of this body and conversations I've had with other members of the public who have watched the board's videos or seen descriptions in the Casa Grande dispatch. The allotted three minutes being belittled and dismissed by one board member indicates an arrogance unworthy a seat on the board. Today, I again praise those within this body who show courtesy, respect, and professionalism, and I look forward to any opportunities to engage with you for the benefit of the county. I denounce an approach demonstrated by an elected official guided by an extreme political ideology, arrogance, and hypocrisy that may stand in the way of that pursuit. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, supervisors, for allowing me to speak. I wasn't going to speak. First of all, this isn't a political rally...
Could we get your name?
Oh, Shirley Carter. This is not a political rally. This is not, it shouldn't be political at all. This is about people coming together to fix a system. That's it. That's it. I'm a poll watcher. I'm a PC. I try to get involved as much as I can in our elected system. From what I see, from my point of view, is our elected system is like Swiss cheese. Okay? There are so many holes, and we're trying to plug up those holes. That's all we're trying to do here. And to make it into anything else is, it's not, this is not the environment to do that. We're here to fix things that we feel that need to be fixed and come up with ideas from both sides. This isn't, like I said, a partisan issue, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we're going to now re...
If I may, Chairman.
Yes.
Just for the record, I would like to just further confirm that we have checked with the attendees in both the overflow room and the Ironwood Room, and there are no additional attendees that would like to speak during Call to the Public.
Okay, but we're still going to rearrange the schedule, and we're going to bypass some things and go to items 11 and 12 for the convenience of all the folks that came.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Yes.
Do we need to have a motion to change the order of the schedule or not?
I don't believe so, Natasha. Isn't that the chairman's prerogative?
The practice of this board has been that the chairman can rearrange the schedule on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, one other clarification. I think we might need to include item number 10 also. I believe that starts at 10, 11, and 12.
Right, so we are going to move on to item 10, 11, and 12, and do we need to get Supervisor Miller on the phone?
Chairman, we're attempting to get Supervisor Miller on the line now.
So this is Public Hearings on Hancock Communities Project, and Supervisor Miller will be joining. And the applicant is Sean Lake, but is someone from the county going to present? Gilbert?
Gilbert, again, I'll be giving the, I guess, a presentation. So we'll go ahead and have a presentation?
Okay. Very good.
So before we get started, as you already know, this case started about, actually, we went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was about four, almost five months ago. The majority of the delay was because of this. We have had over, I'd say about 850 to almost 900 letters of protest.
937.
937. And that number grows a little bit each day. So we have been reviewing the letters of protest, preparing for today. So I just wanted to put that out there that this is one of the big reasons why there's a lot of people here. So this case is from Hancock Homes. What you see in front of you is just a rendering of what they hope this will look like someday. Single-story building, multifamily, hybrid gated development with attached and detached rental homes totaling 228 units with a density of 7.9. We have three cases that we're going to talk about today. The first one being a non-major comprehensive plan amendment. It's to redesignate 28.8 acres of land from suburban neighborhood to land use designation to urban transitional. Now, as I move forward, we're going to call these two different things today for designations because we have a comp plan and we have an area plan. They mean the same, but that's why we did that, is to cover both sides of this. The next application is for rezoning for the same amount of acreage, and it's from general rule to multiple residents, MR. And the last one is for the plan area development for the Hancock Homes. They're calling it the Hancock Communities, PAD, and it's for the same amount of land, and it's to allow for the development standards for this multiple dwelling residential development. The subject site is located on the south side of Hunt Highway at Stone Creek Drive, which is south of the Walmart Shopping Center in the San Tan Valley area. Applicant is Hancock Homes. They're the landowners, and the applicant is Sean Lake, the attorney. So this map here gives you perspective. Obviously, this property is within proximity of Queen Creek, so it's all the way to the north of Pennell County. This is, this map here, the triangle in red is the subject site, and that actually is, lines up with the Hunt Highway corridor. This perspective here gives you a little more perspective as to who is around in regards to subdivisions. There's, the Home Depot is kind of catty-cornered to this. You have the Walmart to the north. You've got subdivisions that are all over the place in regards to this. The vacant land that is across the street from this property is currently state land. This property was state land, but is now, was purchased by Hancock Homes. Another map, more perspective, just shows you kind of a...
Gilbert, can I interrupt in between?
Yes, sir.
So that's state land, and it has to sell at an auction. Was there an auction? Were there any other bidders?
I would not have that answer. I believe Mr. Lake can give you those answers when he comes up to present.
Okay, thank you.
Great question. Area map, this is another, just the same thing. It's an aerial image that gives you more perspective, but it really gives you kind of an understanding of what's around there. Solera, that's the community to the south, and then we have, like I said, we have more subdivisions that are pretty much around this. You've got the Skyline Ranch, you've got the San Tan Heights, the Johnson Ranch to the south there, and kind of in the corner there, that's the mountain portion that's right behind it. Comprehensive plan, moderate low density, actually suburban neighborhood, proposed as high-density residential, transitional. This map shows you the, what's current today per the area plan, suburban neighborhood, and what they're proposing, which is the urban transitional. This land designation would allow them to do the MR, the apartment-type concept. Now, keep in mind, this isn't a typical apartment in the sense that it's stacked buildings. It's a one-level. It actually looks and acts a lot like single-family residential homes, but it still has that apartment component to it. The zoning, as you see right now, is GR, general rule, but now we're requesting the MR, which is what we just spoke about. So we just covered this, but I'll cover it again. It's a multifamily hybrid gated development. It's 228 acres, a single-story. That's the tallest it'll be. We made some provisions for any architectural embellishments. The units, it's a mix of units. It's got one bedroom and three bedrooms, and they're kind of mixed together, so they're not all on one side. So it's nice, they try to bring some... So it's nice, they try to bring some different units to give it kind of a nice mixed feel. The standards, the only one that is on here is that they have a entry that's going to have a 30-foot height, and that's for the architectural embellishments. The rest of the standards are pretty typical when it comes to this kind of project. The one thing I'll keep, I'd like you to see is that they're offering a lot more open space than typically is required, 33%. This is the overall site plan. Apologize, it's black and white. This gives you a little better understanding of what it is. Shows you the units and how they kind of mix together. You've got, like I said, the one-story, two, and three, and they're kind of mixed together. Another important part of this project is that there's three entry points that are suggested. The one that's right here, Mafa Hunt, the main entry point, and they have a smaller entry point that's over here going to the south. And then on the backside, we have actually asked them and convinced them to put in a third entry point to relieve any of the traffic pressure that would exist. This is kind of a landscaping plan. Obviously, this is preliminary, but it kind of gives you perspective as to the type of trees and shrubs that they're going to have. As you can see, it's heavily shrubbed, lots of buffering that they have with the trees and the shrubs, and like I said, it's also to help with any of the noise issues that you're going to get from Hunt Highway.
Mr. Chairman.
But, yes, sir.
All right. Question.
Going back to that last slide on the exit out to, I think it's Gary Road.
Yes, sir.
So I see a ghost image of a roundabout. Would the county be responsible to build the roundabout, or would Hancock?
No, the county would not be responsible, as far as I understand. It's going to, on that detail, I think we're in talks with the Thompson Thrift, the company building on the backside of this.
All right, thank you.
Another thing I didn't mention, a great question, is this is, this project here is a gated community, so that's another reason why it wouldn't be a public driveway. So landscaping, as I said, it's well landscaped, a lot more than what our code requires, and using a plan area development, we can ask the developer to provide more than what's required by code, and this is an example of that. This just gives you kind of their wall plan and how they planned to put the, you know, the walls on the backside and on the front. Pretty typical for most projects like this. This gives you some housing types. I put this on here. We don't review the housing types, but we wanted to show you what it would look like, at least some renderings of the different styles. I mean, if you've got the Arizona Ranch style, if you've got the, you've got this style here, which is a prayer style, you've got some of the amenities that they have here, Ramadas, tot lots, swing sets, barbecue, you know, all kinds of different amenities for the project. This image here is to the north. It shows you just vacant land, and I think across the street, this is kind of showing you the existing state land. Then we got to the south, that's where the mountain's at. East, and then you've got this image to the west. Items for consideration, once again, I just wanted to mention, this case has been under a lot of review and scrutiny, and staff has worked extremely hard to make sure that all options and considerations have been looked at in regards to noise mitigation, working with the public. Matter of fact, I'll get into that in a minute, but we are asking for the high density, which allows this type of residential development. The county, back when they started, we didn't have a lot of applications for multi-housing. Matter of fact, there was only about four or five. Now, obviously, we have a lot more. But at the time, we didn't have that. Now, keep in mind, we're not taking, we're not asking you to take away the commercial zoning. This is GR, general rule. So only houses would go there are that type of use. As I showed you, we've received quite a few letters of opposition. This was more items for consideration. We do support high-density housing stock of its in the right area. The applicant has had two meetings as of yet, aside from what was required by us on the neighborhood means to meet with the HOA and try to understand their concerns. The applicant has made many modifications to the original site. In the beginning, this was going to be a mixture of, I believe, two stories and one story, and now it's all one story. They weren't going to give us two ways in, two ways out. It was going to be, I'm sorry, they were just going to do two. We asked for the third one. They responded. Now, keep in mind, they had to get permission from another landowner who owns the commercial piece on the back to even have that consideration, and she agreed. So they're working through that process. They worked with us on the open space standards, so as you can see, they brought a lot of amenities to the package. They removed homes near the, three adjacent homes in the Solera at Johnson Ranch project. They increased the setbacks to 25. So once again, these are just some of the items that they did to try to make this a better project, but staff has been working with them quite a bit on this project to try to meet the needs of everybody and to help with the concerns that we've had from the public. We are recommending approval of all three applications, one stipulation for the zone change in 15 for the plan area development. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. The applicant is here, if you wish to speak to him.
I do have some questions, but I don't know if it's appropriate to do them now or after the applicant has presented. Anyone else have any questions for Gilbert?
You know, Gilbert, in the responses for opposition, do we have, have you been able to take those and kind of tally what the ration, what the reasoning behind the opposition, like traffic and things of that nature?
Yes, I'd say, as I was going through, the majority is they don't want the change. Then you have traffic concerns, lack of mitigation strategies for that traffic. More traffic on Hunt Highway, that's a big concern. Visual impact was another concern that came up. How is this going to look? You know, we had this beautiful view of desert and the mountain, and now it's going to be taken away. Those were the major concerns. Noise was another one that came up in regards to this, but I believe the visual was, they worked with them to bring it down to the one-story level to accommodate that need of this visual impact that was going to be horrible. So once again, the big one is the change I noticed, because keep in mind, I'd say a third of these comments that came into us weren't even from here, or they're from here, but they're miles away. I've had comments from Chandler, Gilbert, AJ, which surprised me. And a lot of it is just multifamily and its concern with the traffic and how we're going to work with that, what we're going to do. That's the biggest thing I would say was the traffic.
Yeah. And, you know, one of the biggest issues is that Hunt Highway, for instance, is we really need to be looking down the future, what we're going to do there, especially with some of the developments that are going further east, and they kind of convert down in that direction now that we've got more commercial stuff happening around Gary and Hunt. There's going to be more of that type of traffic coming down there. So, and I did notice that part of the traffic issue that's being addressed is it's going to be required of them to put a full-on third lane on the left side in front of their subdivision, and that's one thing that is going to be important, that we do not only with this, but other projects or even no other projects because of everything that's coming to the east.
So, Mike and Gilbert, if we could just be conversational, I will just ask, if not this project, what else can go in there? And I believe, I mean, we don't want to judge other projects by this, by what else is coming, but I think there are apartments that are interested in coming nearby, and this is technically better than apartments, it's less density, but if this gets rejected, and obviously there's 937-plus people don't really like this, what else could go in there? I mean, and if not this, then what may be coming after this?
So what you see around Pinal County, you're existing large, a lot of homes, and to be honest with you, Sean Lake will give you more detail on that, because that was covered at the P&amp;Z meeting, what will happen or what could happen if this doesn't go through. And what was surprising to staff was that the traffic impact could, it's not going to change quite that much as to what could go there versus this. Once again, this isn't an apartment style where you've got three stories. This is one-story little homes. So this is why the traffic impact is not going to be that great. But that's a great question. I also wanted to just quickly bring, great comment, Board Member Goodman, in regards to, they did, after the fact, agree to give us more right-of-way. They hadn't, so now it's 75 feet of right-of-way. So they did, as you said, agreed to additional lane there, so that was good. And like I said, they've been trying real hard to try to meet all the needs of the county. But yeah, I think at the end of the day, the use that would go here if this fails is going to bring a little less cars, but you're not going to have a third entry point off the back. That was negotiated. Now, we've got the attorneys that are working on both projects, the Hancock Homes and the one on the backside, and this is why we were able to meet with them and get them to reach out to the developer and include that extra entry point, but that may go away.
And they're going to be constructing a third lane, which I would like to see that set a precedent for anything that goes in, that we add lanes at that time, and if something else comes after this, they may not offer that third lane. Is that correct?
The third, should, if it's a major arterial, we're going to ask for the full right-of-way, which would trigger a third lane. As regards to who would build it, that's up for the engineers to decide that. But I will also say that in regards to this project, they do have an approved traffic analysis, TIA, impact analysis. So that was approved, that is part of the package. So had that not been approved, we wouldn't be here, but that's also done. So our traffic engineers have already reviewed their traffic impact and said that it was going to be manageable.
So, and continue on with that kind of a conversation here. I appreciate that. And that's one thing that a lot of individuals don't, myself included, have been under the impression, not really knowing what the zoning, like the GR, that the state land already has designation on much of their land throughout, not only Santa Ana Valley, but throughout the county. They have a GR zoning right now, which allows certain amount of density. In fact, I don't think the State Land Department, LEO, or Gilbert, has any commercial aspect to what they've done. So, and by the way, I was looking at the Alphalfa Field to the north of there. That's a little bit better than one of I was farming. His looks a little bit better. He's a better farmer than I am. But, so I'm very familiar with this area right here. In fact, when I leased that property from the state, I was required to lease that corner section right there that's all land, and I was paying lease on that, and I couldn't use it. But, and that's the part is, is that this is all zone residential already, and so that's one thing. But again, back for me is that the traffic issues are a big, big, big issue for all of us out here. I think we've, I think we're pretty good with the Epcor situation, coming in and dealing with the Johnson Utilities, taking that over and providing us with better quality water and sewer services. That's always been an issue in the past. I think that's been helped out with a lot, so. But anyway, I just, you know, for the sake of discussion, is, I just want to make sure that we're not, that we're making sure that everybody understands that this isn't a commercial piece of property that is being requested to rezone into residential. That seems to be a big part of what we're getting inundated with, and we're going to be doing a work session next week that shows the retail leakage that we have in our county, and I'm putting a plug in so that a lot of our constituents listen in on that, because it's amazing how much retail leakage we have. We're a highly, we're probably the most populated area in the entire county, and the amount of retail leakage that we're losing, and it's all because we don't have a lot of the commercial properties that are necessary for these stores to come to. And so we need to be addressing that. But anyway, that's next week. But anyway, any other, I'm, for the sake of discussion, I'm good here.
I have one more comment, if I may.
Do you have one, or do you want to wait for Sean Lake?
I'll ask some quick questions. You may or may not know the answer. When this property was sold around February 2021, is that approximately accurate?
I'd have to check with the applicant.
Okay, I think that's right. And when the state of Arizona sells a property, is it posted that the use may change at that time? Is there a sign that goes up, this is up for auction, the use may change, or do you know?
I don't know, to be totally honest with you.
All right. Then I'll wait for the applicant.
Okay, so I think we're ready to hear from the applicant.
I have one more statement, if I may.
Yes.
This project, because of the amount of protests that we had, there was a provision in the statute that was triggered. So that being said, if a decision is made today, a motion, I need to let you know that a supermajority would be triggered, but if it's not, then that's fine, but just wanted to put it out there that this protest did trigger that, and staff went through the process to verify.
Do you want me to explain it?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to explain that?
Sure.
So there's a provision of state statute that has to do with certain types of legislative actions and when a supermajority is required. It's pretty complicated. I'm just going to be very brief. In the case of this type of projects, project, there are two litmus tests that both must be met. There's an and in between. Essentially, you take a look at a buffer around the subject site, which is shown here of 300 feet. The first litmus test is by number of properties. Number of properties in that area, number of properties in protest, if that, in that 300 feet, if that number of protest exceeds 20%, it meets the first litmus test, and then you move on to the second litmus test. The second litmus test has to do with gross area. So you take the area, you do a 300-foot buffer, you remove the subject site, then you remove all county properties, public right-of-ways, et cetera, from that area, and then you calculate by area those that are protesting the action versus those that are not. And if that exceeds 20%, that meets the second litmus test by which a supermajority vote has to occur at the legislative level. We've done that analysis on the back end, and we've determined that as of today, a supermajority would be required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we hear from the applicant?
Vice Chairman, Board Members, my name is Sean Lake, here on behalf of Hancock Communities, representing the property owner. This property was purchased at state auction. There was one bidder at the state auction. It was published, you know, the state has a procedure when they sell or dispose of public property that they have to go through, and that all was followed and carried forward, and so notification was provided. Now, did people find out or note about it? I can't answer that question, but I did speak to quite a few people who were interested in looking at this property when it was up for public auction, who were interested in it, but at the end of the day, only one person showed up and bid on the property, who is currently the owner of the property. It is currently private property. It is not state land anymore. It is private property, and private property, that private property owner would like to develop the property. As you pointed out, this property is not commercial property. It never has been, and it's not in the general plan for commercial. It's never been designated for commercial development. The property to the west is designated for commercial development. But in light of the recent information that we received yesterday, we submitted a request to the county to continue this case to November 2nd because of the additional information that's been provided, so that we can evaluate it as the property owner. We would also like to use that time to continue to work with the homeowners association and the staff on the project. So we would request that it be continued, I believe, to the first meeting in November, which I think is November 2nd, but I'm not sure, but it would be the first meeting in November. And so I'll reserve my comments on that and continue to listen to the neighbors. Some of the things I wanted to point out, that Gilbert did an excellent job of pointing out, we've made substantial changes to this project from the beginning. The density has been brought down substantially. This is a single-story-only project. I hear a lot of people saying, oh, it's apartments, apartments, apartments. When people think apartments, they think three-story buildings or structures. This is not apartments. These are small, single-family detached homes, for the most part, with a few duplex-type single-story homes, casitas or bungalows, with a substantial setback or buffer on the south side from 95 to 215 feet from the south side separation on the south side. We have and will continue to work with the county on the improvements to Hunt Highway. The original approval at Planning Commission had a 55-foot dedication on Hunt Highway, and that's what we were told, but we're working with the county to provide additional right-of-way on Hunt Highway of 75 feet, and have agreed to make, at the cost of the developer, not the county, improvements to Hunt Highway- the county, improvements to Hunt Highway of a third lane along our property frontage. We also, at the request of the county, as Gilbert pointed out, have negotiated and worked with the adjacent property owner to the west to have a third access to this property. This property does not have frontage on Gary Road. And so anybody that develops this property, say, in the future, they would be solely and completely reliant upon another private property owner granting that permission to access. With this development, we have that, worked with that property owner to gain that third access. And we could have, in our traffic study, somewhere to 30, 40% of the traffic go west to Gary, which we think would be far better, because you have access to the Walmart, you have access to the schools, you have access to other areas that keep you off of Hunt Highway, which again helps alleviate one of several of those issues. So we will be doing, as part of this development, improvements to Hunt Highway and that access to Gary Road. Big buffers, and as Gilbert pointed out, substantial open space. I've also heard that, Sean, you're going to bait and switch. You're going to get this approved for high-density and multifamily, and next thing you know, we're going to have apartments behind us, three-story apartments. That's not. What the board will be looking at, hopefully, on November 2nd, is exactly what we are proposing. If that's approved by the board, we can't bait and switch out another plan and go build three-story apartments. So with that, we would request a continuance to November 2nd, and I'll provide a full presentation at that time, if that's possible. Thank you.
Okay. However, so we do not have a supermajority today, but this is listed as a public hearing, and I think we still have to have a public hearing today.
Yes, sir.
And these folks did come to be heard. So with no further questions for Sean, we're going to go into the public hearing then. And I have some that have filled out slips, but we will entertain listening to others as well. First one up is Connie Rubus.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to talk. My name is Connie Rubus. I reside in Solera of Santana Valley. I do believe that others in this room have the same sentiments about this development as I do, as represented by all the individuals in the black shirts today, or black clothing. The vision for Pinnell County comes directly out of the Pinnell County Comprehensive Plan document. The creation of this document was paid for by the citizens of Pinnell County with the hopes that it would be a guiding light for how the county moves forward with making determinations as the quality of life in the county. Residents emphasize what they value, and they do not want to lose. In relationship to this proposed development, the more rural or suburban environment would be further eaten away. By allowing this to move forward, there are many lost opportunities as to the sense of community and water solutions. This proposal dramatically changes the comprehensive plan that shows it is being zoned for a completely different purpose, not as high-density residential property. As Santana Valley grows approximately 3% per year, this stress stresses, this, the stresses this growth puts on the infrastructure for transportation, adequate retailer, commercial opportunities as enormous. All indicators from articles show the projected growth rate may be underestimated. As you drive between Queen Creek and Florence, you notice thousands of homes, new homes being built. These are being built with fewer dwelling units per acre than this proposed development. With more houses already approved, with building permits and construction going on, this leaves a great need for commercial and retail environment in this area. Retail leakage is projected right now at $626 million, leaving Santana Valley and being spent elsewhere. More recent indicators indicate that it's more like $900 million that are leaving Santana Valley annually, and that 95% of the residents commute out of Santana Valley for appointments, medical appointments, shopping, retail, et cetera. If you, as the board supervisors, would see fit, the entire area of Home Depot, Walmart, and the proposed area would be an ideal community center. Opportunities are endless for other big-box retailers such as Target, Best Buy, Sam's to be built. Sit-down restaurants such as Outback BBQs, Red Robin, versus all the fast-food restaurants going up would also be an asset. Community center would help identify Santana Valley as a viable and great location and keep more of the $900 million from leaving the area. Take a look at how quickly the retail development and commercial development occurred on the new fries at Ellsworth and Reggs. As we pointed out, traffic is an issue. From the economic development of Pinnell County studies in March and May of 2022, there were 45,000, over 45,000 vehicles per day at the Hunt and Gary Road intersection, and 28,475 vehicles per day at Hunt and Bella Vista. The roundabout there is great, but there's so much traffic already that...
I neglect, I saw your red light is on, so we got to wrap it up. We've a lot to speak.
All right. I guess the main point, then, if you need to wrap it up, is that at the December 8, 2000, meeting in this chamber, the discussion lent to rent developments. Mr. Miller raised a great question that all of the board should consider today. Is this a proper use in this location? Use and location, that's what we are looking at.
Okay, and you'll have the opportunity to come back in November as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Dominic McCutcheon.
Good morning. Thank you all for all you do. By chance, I was sitting next to Mr. Lake, and I'm in opposition to this measure, whatever it may be called. And I hope that Mr. Lake knows it's nothing personal, but that's the way the world works. And I think this is, I think this is pretty darn cool, the way this happens. So when I'm speaking, Mr. Lake, it's nothing personal, but I am a native here of Arizona, and I've worked with you, Mr. Goodman, and maybe a couple others that come and gone. And before I moved here, I looked at the master plan, or the community plan, whatever it may be called, specifically with the, looking forward to the future, which is now, here it is. And when I looked at the master plan, it said density would be XYZ, or it would be certain kind of zoning. And now there's a proposal to change it. And we're fast approaching the holidays, and I say that because I'm trying to cleverly seg into a movie that we've probably all seen. It's called A Wonderful Life. And Jimmy Stewart's character was against Mr. Potter. And I kind of feel like this might be one of those moments where I hope that none of you wants to be Mr. Potter. But I think, in spirit, we've got a lot of Jimmy Stewart's behind me. And Jimmy Stewart was the good guy. I don't want you all to be the Mr. Potters. But this, I think this is a matter of, for Mr. Lake, I don't know where he lives, I'm not trying to pick on him, but this is our backyard. Many of us did our homework. We came here with a vision for the future. We understand the way the world works, that this is all part of progress. We all came from somewhere. But this was not part of the plan. And so here we are, speaking in opposition to this plan. And I don't know how this really works, but I suspect money is involved here. And money may be what encourages you to vote a certain way. It's my hope to appeal to your conscience and do the right, you do the right thing, which would be to represent us who do live here and who have planted roots here and have elected you here, because that is what makes this valley what it is. It's not that we're afraid of change, it's that the change that is being proposed was not in the forecast. And I think that gives a lot of people heebie-jeebies. I think that's really all I've got to say. Just tag on to the 937 other complaints. I'm sure a lot of them have to do with traffic. And the traffic going down Gary Road is nearby where my wife and I live. Gary Road's already getting pretty darn busy, and if we port that traffic to the west, south of Hunt Highway, it's going to create, the traffic is already very bad there. Mr. Goodman, as I CC'd you the traffic around that blind corner there at Walmart, it's just going to get worse. So I respectfully vote in opposition, or I hope you vote in opposition.
Thank you. Steve, Steve Walb. Steve Walb? Maybe in the other room? If you could state your name and approximate area you live in?
Yes, my name is Steve Walb, and I live in Johnson Ranch, here in Santana Valley. And I've heard the arguments for and against. And I'm here to make a plea, if not for this project, future projects. The community has stated that they really desire some improved commercial attention to the corridor along Hunt Highway there. And it really is needed for all of the reasons that everybody's spoken about here. They're kind of opposed to the density housing. They want restaurants. They want medical. They want other places they can go. I'm sure you guys are all smart guys. That's why you're in those seats. And you've thought about incentives to draw commercial opportunities into Santana Valley. And if you haven't, I would ask you to start, you know, maybe tax incentives or things like that. Because, and the only reason I say that is because when I was at the, some of the neighborhood meetings and things like that that were going on, the question was asked of the broker, hey, why can't we make this commercial? And he said, well, you know, nobody in the commercial world is coming and asking us for your area. Well, maybe we incentivize people to, for the commercial interest, to bring them here. Give them a five-year tax break, whatever it is. You guys know the best way to do that. So if not for this particular one, because it's already designated as residential, maybe for future ones down the road, I would encourage you to do that. Thank you very much.
Rolf Jacobson. He may be in the overflow room also. And a reminder that these comments, public hearing is also on items 11 and 12 as well, 10, 11, and 12. And Rolf may not be here. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Then go ahead and then give us your name and address.
Hi, my name's Ross Clemenshaw. I live in Solera. Since the beginning of this proposed Hancock development, I've gone to many, many meetings. And one of the meetings that we went to was in Supervisor Goodman's office. There were about six or eight people there. Supervisor Goodman, Mr. Hancock, Mr. Hancock's attorney, Sean Lake, Gary Maudlin, who is the board of directors at Solera, Gene Stockton, who is a resident of Santana Valley and part of the advisory council. During the meeting, Mr. Lake made a statement that the intersection of Gary Road and Hunt Highway was the center of the commercial area of Santana Valley. And we all agreed to that. Everybody agrees. It was a true statement. This land that is, this 26 acres that's there, they're asking to change it from farm ground to residential. Why can't they change it from farm ground to commercial? It is the absolute best land in, on the Hunt Highway for commercial. It's right next to Walmart. It's across the street from Home Depot. It is perfect land for commercial. It has frontage on the Hunt Highway that, that is desired by anybody for commercial land. As far as the traffic goes, I mean, people have talked about the studies and everything, and all the numbers that the traffic is tremendous and on Gary Road. One of the things on Gary Road, when it backs up, and it will back up even more with this, is people will take off and go down Santana Heights Boulevard, and they go down there to Mountain Vista, and then over to Thompson. That puts a strain through that development, and it passes two schools. So that leaves a wide-open area for a disaster. In, on October 7th of this year, Sheriff Mark Lamb had a Solera meeting, a learning table meeting, and he brought up that if all these high-density apartments were coming into Pinnell County, that he doesn't have the deputies to patrol it. So I ask you to look at it as if this was coming into your neighborhood. Would you like it, would you vote for it if it was coming in across the street from you and all these problems that come with it? Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Chairman, Mr. Jackson has joined the meeting.
Okay. Jacobson, I believe.
Okay, I was in the, I was in the far room there, so I had to run over here. I am Rolf Jacobson, live in Solera at Johnson Ranch. I agree with the thoughts that have been expressed here by the previous speakers on behalf of our opposition to this. And I'm going to address maybe two issues. One, which is the traffic. And I love the idea of a third lane, but I stood outside Solera's Hunt Gate, Gate on Hunt Highway this morning for 15 minutes. And I'm trying to figure out, how do I make a left-hand turn during morning rush hour traffic to get onto Hunt Highway? And even if you're sending 30% of those people out to Gary Road, which has its own issues, as was just discussed recently, there are still a lot of people that are going to be trying to make left-hand turns to get onto Hunt Highway. And I have not heard anything from Mr. Lake about how that's going to happen. The only thing I can see is a stoplight, and that creates all sorts of backup problems. You're going to have traffic backed up to Bella Vista. The second issue that I think is a big concern is one that legally, my understanding, and if I'm mistaken on this, please correct me, but my understanding is that there is a legal loophole that, as far as water is concerned, this is being developed as a single plat. So you do not have to guarantee 100 years of water for all of these residences. Every day, and pretty much in the Arizona newspaper, and even in Minnesota newspapers, where I lived during the summer, we read about the issues that the Southwest is having with water. And it is a significant issue. And I would ask, it may be legally okay to do it as Mr. Lake has proposed, but I think I would ask Mr. Lake to consider morally, is this correct to do it? Just because it's legal does not make it a good moral decision, because we all need to be concerned about the future of the water, not only for ourselves, but for the future generations here. And packing this many people into a high-density area without that water is, even though it's legal to do so, is, I don't think it's a moral decision. So those are the things I wanted to emphasize. Thank you.
Everybody, the applause doesn't really affect us, and we all know you're on the same team. So let's cut the applause. Anyone else?
My name is Gary Clark. I live in Solera. And I basically have two things I just want you to, and they've already been said many times, traffic and water. Now, I don't know what the formula is, but I find it hard to believe that you can put up 227 homes and only have one permit. When you're doing a normal development, it's one per one. And we all know water is in a short supply in the desert. I also want to point out that it's my understanding that there was roughly 800 emails sent to the board, in addition to the 900 and some signatures on the opposition. And also, I don't, I didn't catch the whole thing, but the interest from the surrounding communities in this project and their opposition to it, that I think it's just something that I would... in this project and their opposition to it, that I think is just something that I would appreciate that you all consider very deep in your hearts before you vote for this project. Thank you.
Anyone else? Last call, anyone else for public hearing? Hearing and seeing none, and since we do not have a supermajority, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I...
Well, if I could just, is there a way that we can make a comment right now before?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. You know, there were several things that were said here just a minute ago. I just want to make sure that it's clear. There was a, something alluded about money involved. I just want to make sure that it's not, that it's very clear that the money, that's all right, you've already spoken, but I just publicly, I want to make sure that that implication is not any one of us that's on the take of any type. I, I get that, but a public, you know, the perception is everything. And we had Virginia get up here and talk about that earlier, that people misunderstand, they misinterpret on purpose sometimes or by accident. But I just want to make sure that's very clear, number one. The second thing was, that was brought up in this, was our retail leakage. And by the way, it's $1.3 billion is what the latest estimate it is. And again, we're going to have a work session next week to talk about the retail, okay? There's a lot of things in the works that this county is working on and working with developers to do things out in this area specifically to the retail leakage. We get it. And so I, that's part of what I want to talk about. It's not like we've been sitting on our, I'm not the smartest guy on the, on the block and that's not why I got elected, whoever alluded to that. But I got elected because I care. That's it. And I've been here for a while. I've got family here and that's why I was elected. And my actions and things that I've done as a board member has done that. Same way with, I think with all of us that are sitting on this board right now. So I just want to make sure, especially with this being a public hearing and some of the comments that were made right here, I wanted to make sure that the retail leakage, the question was about the opposition, the letters that came in, did that also include the emails that were sent as well? So the total included the emails that came in as well, correct?
Yes.
All right. So to the, whoever brought up the email, we just want to make sure that that's part of the record right here. I just want to make sure there's a clarification of that to make sure that everything that was sent is going to be on record and is part of the information that is being part of this all.
And if I may, just, there's a few letters that didn't make it to staff because of all the going back and forth, back and forth. But everything that I received, we have it and it's here for anyone to view if they want to see it. So not everything you saw online was, was the latest. There's a few that have come in since then and I have those with me today. But we'll get those up now that they just came in. I also wanted to just say before we make any more, any more decisions, in the statements that we use to present the cases, on the last one, on the, on the case ordinance number 2022-PZ-PD-022-21, there was a correction. It actually should say the planning commission recommended approval 7 to 0 of case PZ 21 or 2221 with 15 stipulations. I just need to add that to the record.
Okay.
Gilbert. So for the record, it actually should state that the planning commission recommended approval 511.
I'm sorry. My apologies.
That's on number 11.
Gilbert.
Number 12.
I'm going to ask, Mr. Kavanaugh, do you have any comments?
I have a motion.
Not yet, no, because I want to make some comments too. So, yeah, I want to, several people asked for commercial and you, since it is private land, you can't force commercial. And I used to get asked that all the time when I was mayor and a councilman and the commercial will sort itself out if they feel that they can make money there, a restaurant or a store or whatever. And online is still killing everything. And so you got to support what you do have. And the last thing you want is to have someone come in there and fail and then you got empty buildings that you got to fill. And the community center too is a, is a great idea. I think that should have been planned 20, 30 years ago. But community centers operate at a loss. So nobody's going to give up public land to do a community center and lose money on it. So those are just some thoughts out there. And whatever happens in the, in the upcoming discussions is, if not this project, project, there will be another project coming behind it. So something will go in there and water will be used and people will probably live there. So that's all I had now. If we can ask, I'll ask for a motion now. We, we've already closed the hearing. It's not even going to be discussed until November. So there'll be another public hearing then and you'll be able to talk about it then. Right, we can have a vote. We're going to have a motion on possibly postponing it is what we do. We, we don't have a supermajority, so.
So because we don't have a supermajority, which is going to require the vote, okay? We can't, we can't do it without a supermajority. So with that being said, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this. Is that the right wording?
Continue.
Continue, thank you. That's why you're here. In pink. I, I make a motion that we continue this until November, is it 2nd? Okay, of this year. Item 10 or all three?
All three.
All three.
All three.
10, 11, and 12. Anyway.
Can we have, is there a second?
I would second the motion.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Do the ayes have it? Okay, back to our regular scheduled meeting. Recession. I'm going to take a five-minute recess to let everybody clear out.
And concerned citizens, welcome. Good morning. I, I wish you had done this earlier when I had a big audience. I'm Grover Ramsey. I'm from Casa Grande and with the Casa Grande Valley Elks Lodge, part of the benevolent and protective order of the Elks. The Elks is a organization of, fraternal organization, nonprofit, of about 2,000 lodges nationwide. At least three lodges here in Pinal County, Casa Grande, Coolidge Florence, and Apache Junction. There may be another one or two down south, but I'm not sure of the boundaries. Anyway, that the Elks promote the youth, veterans, and our communities. Part of that is our drug awareness program, which is the largest all-volunteer drug awareness program in the nation. It's supported by the DEA because of the work that we do with that. Part of that is Red Ribbon Week, where we ask youngsters to pledge that they will not use drugs, illegal drugs. And we do that through different functions, including distributing dictionaries to third graders along with the drug awareness information and red ribbon, red ribbons, through haunted houses and harvest festivals during October. Or the recent silent witness and gay night in the area. But Red Ribbon Week is the week of, last week of October every year. And we are asking for a proclamation for that.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, being an Elk myself, I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number three as presented, declaring October 22nd through October 30th, 2022 as Red Ribbon Week here in Pinal County.
Second. Of a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it. So...
Now I read the proclamation.
Yes.
By the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, proclamation, Red Ribbon Week, October 22nd through October 30th, 2022. Whereas the Casa Grande Valley Elks Lodge Number 1957 values the health and safety of all citizens and whereas substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and in contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. And whereas it is the goal of Red Ribbon Week and the Casa Grande Valley Elks Lodge 1957 to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevail, prevent illegal drug use. And whereas the Red Ribbon Week camp, campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibilities for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without illegal drugs or the illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas there are many activities planned during the Red Ribbon Week campaign in Pinal County. Now, therefore, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim October 22nd through October 30th, 2022 as Red Ribbon Week throughout Pinal County. Proclamation proclaimed this 12th day of October 2022.
Okay, thank you.
I failed to mention that we also have essay and poster contests for drug awareness. And the theme for that is "One Pill Can Kill."
And when is the hoop shoot?
And Casa Grande Hoop Shoot is January 7th.
And that goes nationwide, that's always...
And the hoop shoot is a nationwide, each lodge holds their own hoop shoots. And then we do a district shoot and then a state shoot and then it goes to regional and national.
Okay, thanks again.
Thank you. Where are you a member of?
Apache Junction.
Okay, good.
Okay, approval, disapproval of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And Kent Volkmer, but we have Sharon Woodard.
Yes. Hello, I'm Sharon Woodard, Victim Service Manager for the Pinal County Attorney's Office. Members of the board, I have for your consideration and approval a proclamation that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Would you like me to read it or will you vote first?
Yeah.
We're going to take action first and then after that action, after the proclaiming, then you can read the proclamation.
Okay. Any questions on this? They do this every year in October. Everybody's supposed to wear purple. So I'll ask for a motion.
Chairman, I move that we approve item number four as presented, proclaiming October 22, 2022 is Domestic Violence Awareness Month and approve the proclamation to be read.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it. Now we can read it.
All right, thank you. Whereas domestic violence is prevalent in every community and affects all people regardless of age, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion, or nationality. Whereas domestic violence can result in physical injury, psychological trauma, and even death. The devastating consequences of domestic violence can cross generations and last a lifetime. Whereas in 1998, Congress passed Public Law 101-112, officially designating October National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and such legislation has been passed each year since. Whereas one in three women and one in four men in the United States have experienced some form of domestic violence. This adds up to 100 million women and men. Whereas 20 people in the United States are victims of intimate partner violence every minute. Whereas nationwide, an average of three women and one man are killed by a current or former intimate partner every day. Whereas on a typical day, there are more than 19,000 phone calls placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. Whereas nearly 20 people every minute are physically abused by an intimate partner and 72% of all murder-suicides involve an intimate partner. Whereas approximately 26% of children under the age of 18 are exposed to domestic violence in their lifetime. And one in 15 children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year. Whereas men exposed to domestic violence as children are four times more likely than other men to perpetrate domestic violence as adults. Whereas in 2021, there were 98 domestic violence-related deaths in Arizona. Whereas in 2020, the Pinal County Attorney's Office Victim Service Division provided services to more than 2,265 victims of domestic violence. Whereas we are determined to respond to crime and violence by helping victims find not only support, recovery, and justice, but also a sense of hope for their future. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that we are providing accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services to victims of intimate partner violence. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of October 22nd as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and reaffirm this county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists victims of intimate partner violence during Domestic Violence Awareness Month and throughout the year. And to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to victims of intimate partner violence so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. And I'd also like to see if it can be recognized, our staff that is here working tirelessly on the behalf of all victims of domestic violence.
And we're ready to have a picture as well.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. That looks terrible. Okay, come over in the middle. You stay where you are, come over right here. Okay, everybody in the lobby, scoot over. You're going to come all the way over here. There you go. Hold on. Mike, go to your right just a little bit. There you go. There we go. All right, there we go. That's a happy-looking group. And three, two, one. Very happy to be here. Three, two, one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number five as presented, a proclamation of the Pinal County Board of Supervisors that October 22nd will be recognized as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Pinal County.
Second. Okay, can we have all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now we can read it.
By the Pinal County Board of Supervisors proclamation, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2022. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an annual campaign to increase the awareness of this disease and increase the public knowledge about the importance of early detection for breast cancer diagnosis and treatment. And whereas one in eight women will be diagnosed in their lifetime, including in 2022, and expected 290,000 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed in the United States, and breast cancer also affect men. And whereas many organizations continue to search for a cure through vital research, physicians, public health professionals, and advocates continue to educate our community about the awareness of the innovative advancements in early detection and treatment. Whereas the Pinal County Board of Supervisors recognizes the trauma breast cancer brings and understands that this horrible disease strikes women and men within Pinal County's workforce in our community. Now, therefore, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and recognizes all of the above and acknowledge all Pinal County employees and citizen survivors, strength and acts all to join in this worthwhile cause which aims to offer support for those courageously battling this disease, to recognize the many survivors, and to honor those lives that we have lost to this disease. Proclaim this 12th day of October, 2022.
And are we going to do a picture?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, do be careful. Come, uh, come over here. There you go. Switch over one. So you're in between there, and then there, there you go. There we go.
How's Max looking? I tried to work, please.
And looking here, three, two, one. Oops, sorry, hold on. Got to switch. And again, three, two, one. And again, three, two. Totally happy, there's some great smiles. All right, thank you very much.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we partnered with the Arizona Commerce Authority and Lucid Motors in the past, as well as the City of Casa Grande, to develop the Drive 48 Training Center. It's been a great success, they ran over 2,000 employees through there. A couple of weeks ago, ABC did a really, a good story, a clip on it, it's a couple of minutes. I think it really represents the effect it's had on the community, and I've been able to visit myself and, and really attest to the energy and the motivation and stimulation and joy that the workers have when they're going through that training center. And as you know, we're trying to do a similar thing at the Superstition Mountain Campus if all goes well and is planned for the electric vehicle battery manufacturing industry. So I don't know if Kelsey, if you have that queued up, or if maybe Natasha does?
Just for clarification, I heard you say you ran over 2,000 employees? You didn't run them over, did you? I just want to make sure.
They ran them over.
Yeah, okay. It was a driving, training course, and so, anyway.
Yeah, it's a crash course.
What are we waiting on? We're just queuing up.
Oh, yeah.
Group of Lucid junior tech maintenance workers are busy tearing down a robot arm. Dissecting the wrist, a lesson in troubleshooting and repair.
We're able to give them a great experience of what they're going to see when they go out to the factory floor.
Lucid Motors is literally creating its own history in Casa Grande, building a 21st-century electric automobile with an 1,100 horsepower engine. It can travel 520 miles on a single charge.
Casa Grande's never seen nothing like this. Pinal County has never seen nothing like this. It's a great opportunity for a lot of people.
Vicente Procella, born and raised in Eloy, is one of 1,700 Lucid employees, learning new skills, working a job he never imagined five years ago.
I definitely feel fulfilled coming home, you know, like that I've done something at work rather than just clocking in and clocking out.
The training program is part of Drive 48, a collaboration among government, industry, and academia to bolster Arizona's tech workforce training efforts. Over the next several years, 6,000 Lucid employees will come through this program. And what we heard today from some of the employees is that Drive 48 has been life-changing.
My son, you know, seeing that I'm going to college and the age that I am, it gives him a better perspective.
Fernando Perez is a lifelong Casa Grande resident. Before Lucid, Perez worked for 13 years in a job putting labels on buckets.
It's a great experience to be a role model for my family, for my children, you know, to see that it's not too late to pursue something that they want to do in life.
Now Perez is repairing robots, with opportunities to learn other skills and advance as Lucid grows its footprint. Mark Phillips, ABC 15, Arizona.
That's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. Purchasing Division Report, Tiara.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the board. I am Tiara Peterson, your purchasing manager for Pinal County, and this is your purchasing report for October 12th, 2022. First, the board has requested to approve the following change order per Pinal County Procurement Code, Section PC 1-502, governing change orders that exceed minimum thresholds. PO 246-560 for Trace Consulting, for a change order in the amount of $114,492.56, for the new total of $371,775.23, for the Combs Road Improvement Project on Schnep Road and Kenworthy Road, and this is for the Public Works Department. And then finally, the board is hereby notified of the following cooperative purchases made. PO 248-385 for Ellison Mills Construction LLC, in the amount of $195,348.43, for service for Mill and Overlay on Randolph Road, and this is used by the Public Works Department. We recommend approval as presented with the correction to purchase order number 248-385 to Reed Mill and Overlay on Randolph Road under the reference section on the PO and items on the purchasing division report. And that concludes your purchasing division report for October 12th, 2022.
Any questions? Then I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve as presented with the correction, purchase order number PO NO 248-35, to Reed Mill and Overlay on Randolph Road under the reference section on the PO and items on the purchasing division report.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
And... Which finally brings us to consent items. All of the following items will be handled by a single vote. Does anyone want to pull anything? Anyone from the public want to pull anything for further discussion?
Item U as an umbrella.
Okay. Anyone else? Then I'll ask for a motion as it stands without you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve consent items A through AQ, with the exception of U as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay, the ayes have it. It was in a separate folder, I apologize for the sloppiness of my presentation. So, we're back in session with the regular board meeting. And this is, I believe we did 10, 11, and 12, we're up to 13, correct? Yeah, so item number 13, approval, disapproval of Ironwood LP.
Good morning, Vice Chair and both members. This is Sangita Deoker presenting the special use permit. This is one of the first ones, there are two special use permits that have been on the agenda today. This is SUP 005-22. This is a request to install a flush-mounted wireless communication facility on an existing mini-storage building. The size of this parcel is 3.58 acres, and the location is east side of North Ironwood Road, south of West Bima Road with proximity to Town of Queen Creek. Owner applicant is GSA Ironwood LP, or owner, and Declan Murphy is the applicant for this case. This is the county map showing the location of the special use permit, you can see that it's in the north portion of the county, and it's marked by a red star. It's proximity to Town of Queen Creek, located in unincorporated Pinal County. Existing zoning is a C3, and one can see that north and south is again a commercial zone, C3. Eastern portion of this parcel is platted to R7, and the west portion is Town of Queen Creek. Southern portion is a CR3 residential zone. Aerial map showing the miniStorage building, and that's the only building on this site in, in the commercial zone. The north and south portion of the parcels are undeveloped, they're separate parcels, commercial zone. Eastern portion, one can see the, you can see the grain and texture showing the development of the residences on the R7 zoning, and the western portion, Town of Queen Creek. Area map further showing the boundary where the property owners were intimated of this special use permit for this wireless communication facility. Area map, again showing...
to purchase another acre to double the size of the current parking lot.
To double the size.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chow, you brought this up. Do you have anything to add or...
I don't know. I'm representing GCCI, and since it is in our neighborhood and it is an area of concern, I was just wanting to get some clarification of what the issue was because it wasn't really clear in the documentation that presented. So that's, that's fine.
And back to the, if this does happen, when could it, what would be a timeline on this? We're obviously not going to do it this season.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I don't have an answer for that right now. I can, I can research that and get back to you.
Yeah, maybe we can give a future explanation of that for everyone. That'd be great. All right. That said, I'll ask for a motion.
If we're looking for the future of that particular trailhead, I'd like to recommend that the county look into... What happens is that trailhead is so far up Kings Ranch Road from the 60. So if people want to get there and the parking lot is already fill, full, can we, is there some mechanism, some kind of signage or something that we can say, hey, lot full, so they can maybe go to another trailhead in the area? That would help that situation.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, we're planning to do that and, and help redirect them over to our Peralta Regional Park as that's going to be built out and our trails over off of Peralta Road and, and the federal trails off of Peralta Road as well.
Maybe when we hear more about this, we can get some details on that as well.
Yep.
Okay. Now I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number U as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So I'm going to... Assess the regular meeting and go to Public Health. Public Health is now in session. And is there any presentations on this or just a vote on... I don't really see where I'm asking for a vote on my... Okay. Go to the... Is there any discussion here? That's why. Okay, is there a motion on the consent agenda for Public Health?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item A as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, the ayes have it. It was in a separate folder. I apologize for the sloppiness of my presentation. So we're back in session with the regular board meeting. And this is, I believe we did 10, 11, and 12. We're up to 13, correct? Yeah, so item number 13, approval, disapproval of Ironwood LP.
Good morning, Vice Chair and both members. This is Sangita Deoker presenting the special use permit. This is one of the first ones. There are two special use permits that have been on the agenda today. This is SUP 005-22. This is a request to install a flush mounted wireless communication facility on an existing mini storage building. The size of this parcel is 3.58 acres and the location is east side of North Ironwood Road, south of West Bima Road with proximity to Town of Queen Creek. Owner applicant is GSA Ironwood LP owner, and Declan Murphy is the applicant for this case. This is the county map showing the location of the special use permit. You can see that it's in the north portion of the county and it's marked by a red star. It's proximity to Town of Queen Creek located in unincorporated Penal County. Existing zoning is a C3, and one can see that north and south is again a commercial zone, C3. Eastern portion of this parcel is platted to R7, and the west portion is Town of Queen Creek. Southern portion is a CR3 residential zone. Aerial map showing the mini storage building, and that's the only building on this site in the commercial zone. The north and south portion of the parcels are undeveloped. They're separate parcels, commercial zone. Eastern portion, one can see the, you can see the grain and texture showing the development of the residences on the R7 zoning and the western portion, Town of Queen Creek. Area map further showing the boundary where the property owners were intimated of this special use permit for this wireless communication facility. Area map again showing the same parcels. This is the coverage map showing without the wireless communication facilities, the extent of coverage. One can see that in contrast with the following map with the wireless communication facility adding the coverage, extending the areas for this communications and use of wireless facilities. This is the site plan showing the existing mini storage building on which the red circles are marking those points on which, at which those antennas are going to be added. And in the following map, it shows the elevation where you can see that those features are part on the parapet portion of the building. And a zoom down portion showing through the north of this picture where they just, they just come out into the air and on the northern portion, top area belt of this elevation. Some pictures taken along north. You can see that the mini storage building, there's really nothing to the, to the north of this building, and that's the only building that kind of comes out on that road. South along the same road into the property showing that mini storage building. And opposite showing the R7 development that has already happened, houses along that opposite of that road. Some items for both consideration. This is an addition of a flush mounted antennas which has minimal visual impact. They almost look like architectural elements on this mini storage building. The color used for these antennas is similar to the building color. Traffic impacts for these communication facilities are minimal as the occasional maintenance required. Coverage map shows the area covered with and without the facility, showing increase in coverage areas for this wireless facility. There were three letters in opposition that we received. However, those were very well answered by the applicant. They were talking about implications of those wireless aspects of radiation and things like that that were taken care of. Planning and zoning recommended approval with 14 stipulations, and I'm open for any questions at this point in time.
Are there any questions?
I guess when, if you, if that's okay, Mr. Vice Chair. Wireless, are you talking about the, is this a capacity for internet or is this all wireless phones, things of that nature?
I think it's everything.
Okay, for all of it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's really what, yeah.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this issue? Hearing seeing, then I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 13 as presented with 14 stipulations.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the ayes carry it. Number 14. Is this Sangita again?
Yes. Thank you once again. This is the second special use permit called the SUP 00622. And this is another special use permit requesting to install wireless communication equipment on a relocated ball field light pole in Santan Foothills High School. The parcel size is 10 acres and this location is southwest intersection of West Riverdale Road and North Gary Road. The owner applicant is Florence Unified School District and the same applicant that is Declan Murphy who is representing them. Again, the county map showing the location outside of the Town of Queen Creek, but very much northern portion of the county shown with a red star. Existing zoning and surrounding zoning showing the parcel site, which is Santan Foothills High School, and one can see the surrounding land uses being GR zoned, SR zoned to the north. South has the CR1A largely, very large lots and residential areas surrounding. Aerial map showing the portion of the parcel, which is the school site. Northeast portion is the portion that has the school buildings and the accessory buildings related to the school, and you can see the football, the field. And eastern and the large portion of the site is pretty much open. The case map again showing the extent, the property owners that were notified for the special use permit, and it also shows the zoomed down zoning, showing large lots around, surrounded by GR zone residential largely. Again, number of parcels that were notified surrounding this parcel, area map. Similar coverage map without the wireless communication facilities, and this is with the, the coverage map extending into the larger area with the addition of the wireless communication facilities. This is the site plan where the relocation of that pole has been, is moved. The applicant took advantage of an existing light pole. So there's already then existing light pole that was just shifted 10 feet north due to the way the layout for the communication facilities was required by that, by that school. So this is showing the dotted red line at the bottom shows where the original location was, and it's moved to the north, adjusting all of the requirements, the ground equipment and the, the facilities that requires all of those telecommunication, I would say, utilities. The right side shows the, the light pole and the addition of those communication equipment on that existing pole. It's, it's going to be relocated. The lights are going to be the same. The addition of that facility at the ground level, which also is covered by the compound wall. Some pictures taken north. The school is on the right side of this road into the parcel with the school buildings showing at the backside along east and west. One can see that the development very much is really sparse with, on the northern side, there's not much, it's pretty much open lots. Again, items for both consideration, addition of antennas, radios on an existing ball field light pole that is relocated 10 feet north from the prior location. No negative visual impact. People are already used to seeing that pole moving by 10 feet is not going to have any change drastically. Still looks as part of multiple structures that are located on the property. Again, traffic impacts are minimal for such facilities. Coverage map shows the increase in coverage areas, and for this one, we really received no letters in opposition. Planning and zoning recommended with 14 stipulations, and I'm open for any questions. We also have the applicant here if you have any specific questions for the wireless communication facilities that have, that I have shared for these two cases.
Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see there were no responses from the public, no objections. How was the public notified? For the benefit of the public, I know, but how, how did, how did the public get notified of the changes in this case?
So basically, as part of every rezone, special use permits, we send out property mailouts. We have the letters that are sent out to them. Besides that, we also have agency mailouts that are sent by the staff to intimate all of the agencies involved, whether it is utilities, schools, well, this is part of the school facility itself. So that's the process that is observed 21 days prior to the hearing.
All right, thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on it? Hearing seeing, then I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 14 as presented with 14 stipulations.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the ayes have it. Item number 15 is Sangita again. And just take it off.
Sure. Thank you once again, Sangita Deoker presenting the next two cases. These two cases are, first is a pad amendment and rezone. The pad amendment in this case comes first, which is PCPD 048-21. This is a request for removal of 160.25 acres from an original pad, 612.83 acres of Bella Vista planned area development overlay. This was originally entitled under the case PCPD 020-04, it says 2004. And the applicant is requesting to remove this and then rezone the remaining 452 acres, which is the following case, from CR3 pad to R7 pad, a single residence zone. So that's part of the Bella Vista pad amendment and the rezone. The proposal for rezone is 452.58 acres. Location is southwest corner of Bella Vista Road and Quail Run Lane in Santan Valley area. Owner applicant is West Holdings Fulton Homes, and we have Chris Webb who is representing, who is the agent from Rose Law Group. Again, county map showing a similar location, Town of, very close to, outside of Town of Queen Creek, unincorporated Penal County, shown by the red star, northern portion of the county. Area map showing the original extent of this Bella Vista pad, and one can see the surrounding land uses for this. Town of Florence abutting on the eastern portion, southern portion residents, northern also residents. And let me zoom down. The comprehensive plan for this, it falls under the Santan Valley Special Area Plan as suburban neighborhood, and the aerial map at this point shows not developed land, and it has remained undeveloped since 2004. Applicant would like to make some changes based on today's market demands and preferences. This is the zoning map zooming to showing the portion of the pad amendment that shows that needs to be removed. Now, that is the 160 acres that is going to be removed of the northwest corner, and the eastern portion as a L shape is the portion that is going for a rezone from CR3 to R7. The corner portions in the zoning, which are the CB2 pads, are not going to be touched. They are going to remain the same, which is accounts to 37 acres. That is not part of the amendment or the rezone. Those would be as is and would follow the original pad, I would say stipulations and the code that were originally determined. This is the new development plan for the amendment area that you can see on the L shape that we talked about, and the portion which is on the northwest is the portion which would be coming up in the following two cases that I would be presenting again. For this portion of Bella Vista pad amendment, the development plan shows the layout of this with entry points along Bella Vista, Quail Run, and Judd Road. So you can see there are multiple entry points. It is, it is going to be developed in four phases with eight lot mixes per today's market demand. 18% of open spaces have been allocated, which are active and passive, and the drainage for this site flows on, flows on east and south handled by passive open spaces along the edges with retention basins in all of the four phases. TIA improvements have been approved by the county engineer and the developer and the, are in constant working, constantly working with the county engineer to ensure that they have been taken care of. This layout also shows the open spaces very well dispersed with each phase having its own community green open spaces interconnected with pedestrian networks, and the next plan shows that. With each phase, as I said, with centrally located park with amenities, tot lots, ramadas, and play areas that have been interspersed, recreational amenities, sports tennis courts, pickleball courts, and as mentioned, street network creating a continuous pedestrian network across the whole pad, Bella Vista pad amendment. It's a master plan. It has connections in each phases. One can go from one point to the other with the pedestrian network that has been very well designed. Some land use comparisons. This map, this actually table shows that the original approved Bella Vista pad was three dwelling units per acre, that is the density. Proposed pad amendment is 3.79 dwelling units per acre, and total residential areas is 452.58 acres with change from the number of units from 1,358 to 1,714 units. One can also see in the open space table that they have provided 18.6% of open space, which amounts to almost 84.05 acres for this approximately 450 acres of area. This, this table actually shows the, I would say, the lots, the number of lots and the options that the new residences would be like and have options for the new people, new residential, I would say, people coming in into the Santan Valley area with eight lot mixes. Density proposed is 3.79, which follows the suburban neighborhood density approved by, under the Santan Valley Special Area Plan. Some pictures along north Quail Run Road. South, one can see it's totally undeveloped at this point, along east and west. Some issues for both consideration, total area for this pad amendment is reduced from 612.83 acres to 452.58 acres for a new pad development for this area. All stipulations, 1 through 9 of the original case, which is PCPD 020-04, would be valid for the 37 acres of the commercial parcels that are not part of this pad amendment and rezone. They remain as commercial zones. Bella Vista pad rezone conforms with the Santan Valley Special Area Plan where the land use designation allows up to one to four dwelling units per acre, while this has the 3.79 dwelling units per acre that has been proposed. Access points, multiple access points as shared earlier in the site plan, one along Bella Vista, three along Quail Run, two along Judd Road. So 1,714 units have been proposed with eight lot mixes. Drainage has been very well managed. Drainage plans have been also approved by the county engineer. Offsite and onsite stormwater management with retention basins across the community with passive open spaces along the east and south edge. Traffic circulation, as mentioned earlier, has been designed to handle traffic generated with major and minor collectors for traffic movement and dispersal. All road improvements with associated development would be conducted phase wise as shared in the traffic impact assessment document, which is in the staff report. Open space is 18.6%, which is well, much, I mean, 0.6 more than what is expected by Penal County standards, amounts to 84.05 acres. We received no letters in opposition. Planning and zoning recommended approval with 16 stipulations, and I'm open for any questions. The following two cases also are part, sorry, a part of this portion of this. If you would want the applicant to, he has a presentation too. If you would want, the applicant to, he has a presentation too, Chris Webb. And if you want, he can share that at the end of the following two additional cases. Or if you would want, he can share it right now.
Do we want to see that? You're familiar with it, do you think it would be useful for us?
I think it would be useful at the end of the, after the following two more additional cases.
Okay. And by the way, for the record, we were doing 16 as well as 15. I forgot, I failed to announce that. So these are public hearings, would anyone like to speak on these? Hearing and signature, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item 15 as presented with 16 stipulations.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it. And for item number 16?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item number 16 as presented with four stipulations.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have that one as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go with the next case. The next two cases are part of a continuation, I would say, although separate, but are part of the same area.
Okay.
This would be PC-049-21 and PCPD-049-21. So this proposal is two cases. The portion that was the severance portion of the prior two cases. This rezone, first case, is for the 160.25 acres of that same area, from CR3 single residence zone to R7 single residence zone. This project name is Fulton Homes, developed by Fulton Homes Tiara Linda. And a pad overlay request for the same area with a new development standards. Proposal is for 160.25 acres. Location is same, southwest corner of Bella Vista Road and Quail Run Lane, Santan Valley area. Owner applicant, West Holdings Fulton Homes is the applicant. Agent is Chris Webb from Rose Law Group. County map showing the same location as shared earlier, north portion of the county, shown by the red star. Area map showing the portion of the pad that was earlier shared with you again. Residence area to the northeast, south. And one can see it is also having a corner of the commercial zone which is existing, but it's not part of this. Comprehensive plan, suburban neighborhood, the same. The aerial map, I'm going to take it for the non-developed area. Aerial showing the surrounding, you can say, agricultural land being seen, not developed. Zoning, zooming down to this portion that was removed in the prior case, is now the portion that is come for a rezone and a pad overlay. Commercial pad portion of this northwest corner, CB2 remains the same, is not part of this proposal. And can see that now is the portion that is actually, which was removed and is developed by Fulton Homes, but also kind of very well connects to the pad amendment which was showed earlier. Entry points for this development of 160 acres, one can see that is along Bella Vista and Sierra Vista Drive. Fulton Homes has shown four phases with four lot mixes for today's market. Open space is 18.1%. Drainage, again, similar, slopes towards west, minor offsite handled by retention basins and landscape tracks. The TIA has been approved by the county engineer. Developments for this area would be as recommendations per TIA report. Open space is 18%, zooming down into this development by Fulton Homes with four phases. We can again see the similar, I would say, theme that was for the Bella Vista rezone. Centrally located parks, it almost kind of connects to the existing pad. It doesn't look as a separate development. Very well integrated with the surrounding and the eastern portion of the development with amenities which are similar tot lots, and ramadas, play areas, recreational areas, sports tennis courts, pickleball courts, and street network would be such that it connects to the existing Bella Vista. They have connections, the roads which go south and east to the existing Bella Vista development. Fulton Homes land use table shows 160.25 acres with total net acreage 160.25 with open space 18.1%. Lot mixes, as shown, are four lot mixes. Total lots are 617 lots with 3.85 dwelling units per acre. And as again allowed under the new, under the Santan Valley Special Area Plan, suburban neighborhood. Open space 18.1% as provided amounts to 28.93 acres. Again, pictures along north, south, east, and west. Total area for this rezone and pad is 160.25 acres. Commercial portion parcel is not part of this proposal. Fulton Homes at Tiara Linda conforms with the special area, Santan Valley Special Area Plan with land use designation of suburban neighborhood, which allows one up to four dwelling units per acre. Access points have been taken care of along Bella Vista, Sierra Vista Drive. And number of units is 617 with overall density of 3.85 dwelling units per acre. Housing alternatives, four lot mixes that have been provided options for the new homeowners based on current market demand. Drainage traffic has been very well handled and the developer, as mentioned earlier, has been working with the county. And open space is 18.1% as provided, planned with all kinds of amenities and trail systems that would be for the new residents for this area. Received no letters in opposition for this case too, and planning and zoning recommended approval with 13 stipulations. I'm open for any questions.
Any questions? There are no questions, just as a public hearing, would anyone like to speak on 17 or 18?
Just for point of clarification, water. A lot of these rezoning things that are coming before you, you're putting more units per acre. And I assume that the pads were originally cleared with this hundred-year water stuff. Now you're putting more units. Is anybody looking at what's happening? Because you're approving a lot of stuff that's putting more houses in the same amount of space, which means more water use. So I'm just curious if that is part of the consideration.
That is a good question, and that's happening all over the valley.
Dave Coward from Colcane.
So would the applicant want to respond to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, supervisors. I'm Chris Webb with Rose Law Group. It's a good question, certainly one that should be asked. So yeah, through these four cases that are before you, you know, we are adding homes to this piece of property. The water provider in this area is Epcor. We have been working with Epcor on this project now for over a year as they are master planning, you know, to provide, continue to provide water in this area and to account for the projects that are coming online. Epcor, as I think, you know, the county has gotten to work with them recently. Epcor is a, you know, first-class outfit. They are very professional in the way they handle their water system and planning. And so in working with them, we feel very confident that their existing water system and the improvements we will be making as part of this project have the capacity to serve this project.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I was just going to say.
You're going to cut me off.
No, no, I was going to say, my presentation's up. I, if you don't have questions that you think may be answered by this, I'm happy to save you the time. If you're interested, I can, I'm happy to give it to you its brief.
Yeah. And one thing that I would like to do, if it's okay, Mr. Vice Chair, is that maybe Brent at some point come up and talk about, they meet regularly with Epcor and other water providers throughout our county to this very issue that's being brought up. And I think it's important that we get that message out to the public that we as a county are very much aware of the water issues and we're taking initiatives on our part to make sure, working with the water providers, that there is adequate water supply for those that are already platted, people that live here currently, and even with the increase in density that's being proposed in some of these projects. So whenever the time's right there, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Do you want to?
Your discretion. It's brief, might be helpful.
Yeah, it might. We are briefed on things like this, but for the public that's watching it could definitely be helpful.
Wonderful. Okay, so again, this kind of covers items 15, 16, 17, and 18. So this is the current site plan for this section called Bella Vista 23 that was approved by the county back in 2004. As you can see here, this kind of hearkens back to an era when builders and developers were often taking down entire sections of land, developing that all at once. It kind of had this, you know, this big loop road here in the middle of it. That's sort of a pre-recession plan. This isn't really viable in today's market. The builders aren't taking down entire sections of land like this. And so really what we've got is, you know, this old plan approved 18 years ago, intended for one master developer to build the whole thing out. Really, it's outdated and no longer viable, which is why we're here before you today. Just real quickly, Sangita touched on this, but one of the things that's changed since then is that the county has adopted the Santan Valley Special Area Plan. Under that area plan, the property is designated suburban neighborhood. And what we have proposed here today is in conformance with the Santan Valley Special Area Plan, which allows up to four dwelling units per acre for this site, and we are under that. This is the updated site plan that you can see for the entire section. The Fulton Homes phase will be the initial phase. The idea here, in addition to conforming to the area plan, is it's kind of a fresh update that old plan. It's a layout, street geometry, park configurations that really reflect the demands of today's home buyers. It also allows for this to be developed in phases, which the prior plan did not. And the Fulton phase, the Tiara Linda project, will be the initial phase of this project. Another important thing, it preserves the two commercial corners. We are not touching those, those will stay. We're also adding 20 acres of additional open space in this plan. It's been kind of strategically placed so that each phase has a nice park, centralized park in the middle of it. The Fulton phase actually has two of them. So it's a much better plan overall. We have an upgraded amenity package. There'll be six total community parks, an aquatic center, enhanced walls, fences, monuments, enhanced pedestrian connectivity. Overall, just a much better plan. And then speaking, you know, to the initial phase that Fulton will do, these are some images of the housing product that's intended to come here. Fresh home design, quality construction. I know the county's familiar with Fulton's projects. And we believe that it will establish a standard of quality in this part of Santan Valley. So quick summary, replacing an outdated plan from 2004. It conforms to the Santan Valley Special Area Plan, preserving both commercial corners. We're adding 20 acres of additional open space, enhanced amenities, everything. And frankly, just a far superior project for both the county and the residents. We're glad to have staff recommendation and P&amp;Z recommendation for approval. That's it, thank you. If you do have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Does it look like it?
Thank you.
Okay, Sangita, is that everything that we need to hear? Are we ready for motions? Because I already closed the public hearing.
Unless Brent wanted, you wanted to talk to Brent about some.
If I could just have Vice Chair, just have Brent talk a little bit about the work that we do with the water providers throughout the county.
Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, folks in the audience and watching us on TV today. Water, as the gentleman mentioned earlier, is a continuing topic of interest throughout the area in Southwest and Arizona, and has been of particular interest in Pinal County due to the Pinal County AMA and some of the work that's being done in that arena. And a lot of that's being led by Supervisor Miller. Just briefly, to address this issue today, when you talk about Epcor and service, serviceability, and what is provided, Epcor's service area is split between two active management areas. The Pinal County Active Management Area and the Phoenix Active Management Area. This project's located in the Phoenix Active Management Area. There's more water in the Phoenix Active Management Area than there is in the Pinal Active Management Area. In order to get a subdivision like this approved and able to go to market, there has to be an assured water supply that's associated with that. That has to be proven through the Arizona Department of Water Resources. So when Fulton Homes and Chris's client take this product to the market, and trust me, they wouldn't have spent the amount of money they've spent to get to this point if they didn't have the ability to get an assured water supply on this project, then it wouldn't come forward. One of the things that was mentioned earlier today, and I thought about standing up and talking to it, is this idea that there's a caveat in place so that apartment complexes or rent-to-own complexes, they don't have to go through the process to make sure that there's water. Well, that's not true. It's a different process than on a residential subdivision for the assured water supply for individual lots. In that case, they work with the individual provider, and the provider is tied to the amount of water they have in their designation in this term. Epcor, and Epcor has to actively manage the water that is, that they're available to either withdraw or use from alternative sources to be able to serve them. You're right. I spend a lot of my time working on water. I have a passion for water. I spend a lot of my time, we coordinate with all the major providers in Pinal County. Epcor is just one of them, Global Water, Arizona Water. And we'll be back in front of the board on various projects we're working on with those other providers, as well as individual communities that have designations. For example, the town that we're in right now, the town of Florence. Hopefully that was helpful.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
So now I will ask for, we need separate motions on 17 and 18, correct? Yes, 17.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item number 17 as presented with one stipulation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item number 18, motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 18 as presented with 13 stipulations.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes carry that one.
Thank you.
Item number 19, approval disapproval for pay structure salaries, Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, gentlemen. Matt Thomas, Chief Deputy for the Pinal County Sheriff's Office. So this piece is just a continuation of what we have been doing, working with county management and you as the board. The sheriff's commitment to attract good personnel, retain good personnel. As you know, in our industry, that is the problem right now, is the recruitment and the retention. So to continue to be one of the frontrunners in recruitment and retention, this is a continuation of that process. And so the county, the board, has been gracious in the past few years in continuing to look at surrounding pay and look more at who are we losing people to, not who are we like. So looking at the. So looking at the competitors rather than the comparators, and this all stemmed from that. And so this is another piece that we're asking for, and it addresses both the detention and the deputy side. And so it is to fix those, not really fix, but adjust those step to get an increase to keep retaining, keep recruiting. And we've done quite well in that area with the culture shift in our agency, in our county, with the synergy right now in the county leadership, and with our ability to pull from other agencies, like our laterals, we've done really well with deputy laterals, getting people from other agencies, which may come with training that we don't have to spend money on, they come with experience. Same with detention. We've been able to attract from other agencies, DOC, other sheriff's offices, and get experienced detention officers in. And so that's what we're going for here, is another increase with these steps to stay competitive with the market. And as you've seen around Arizona, Phoenix, DPS, a lot of them have significantly increased their rate of pay for sworn officers, and our brothers and sisters in sheriff's offices have done the same. And I can tell you, in discussing, I talked to the chief deputies from around the state quite a bit as a group, and we, Panal County, I would say Panal County and Yavapai County are probably two that are doing fairly well. When we talk about our vacancy numbers now, comparatively, we're doing well in retaining and recruiting new talent to Panal County. And I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not going to discuss the money part of it. Angie will hit that part. I'm sorry, Vice Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Angie Woods. I'm the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance. Natasha, would it be possible to pull up the slide that we had prepared for today? Thank you. To quickly go over this, we've highlighted major changes to these step salary matrices. We're, on the sworn side, we're essentially increasing the step, the base pay by about 2 and 1/2 percent. So deputy sheriffs, and we did the same there on the sergeant sworn as well. So deputy sheriffs and sergeants, this fiscal year should see approximately a 5% increase in pay, the 2 and 1/2 from their step progression, and another 2 and 1/2 from the adjustment to their range. In addition, the sergeants, we've added an additional step there. The lieutenants will receive approximately a 7% raise, 5% shift in the step progression, and 2 and 1/2 for their annual step increase. Captains will receive approximately a 10% because there again, we've added an additional step to the lieutenant range. So there again, 7 and 1/2 for the change in the matrices, and 2 and 1/2 for their annual raise. Total cost of this sworn side, we're anticipating that cost to be about $800,000. The change to the matrix was about $330,000. So we anticipated part of that, but additional $330,000 for the change to the matrix. Any questions on the sworn matrix?
Looks like no.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then on the detention side of things.
Just real quick, when you're done, can I talk to the executive level?
Sure. Absolutely. Sorry. Sorry, you threw me off just a moment. So what we've done on the detention officer side, you can see that we are reducing the number of steps in the proposed salary matrix, and we have increased the base for the detention officer from $41,800 to $46,139. So detention officers that are currently employed will see this year their 2 and 1/2 percent step salary increase, and then with a total of being about 13%. So another, you know, 11, 11-ish percent on the salary change there. That flows through to the sergeants, lieutenants, and captains. Those all will see a 2 and 1/2 percent pay increase for the matrix change and an additional 2 and 1/2 percent step salary increase. Total cost of the detention salary changes this year, we're anticipating about $540,000. The adjustment to the salary matrix, which lies heavily on those line level detention officers, is about $320,000. So total changes between those two matrix, about $650,000, just on the salary matrix changes. Any questions?
Nope.
And I think Chief would like a few other words.
Hello again, Chief Thomas from Panal County Sheriff's Office. I just wanted to quickly note, just for your knowledge and for the public's knowledge as well. So you'll see a bigger increase on the executive level this side, the sergeants, the lieutenants, and the captains. And so I wanted to make sure that people understood that the last time, when you guys initially pushed us over to the step program, which we asked for, we were very aggressive on the line level staff, and we kind of told our executive staff, you're going to have to wait. And so they've waited these three or four years, and now, and they were way below market. And so now we're making those adjustments. And so that's why the bigger percentages on both sides of the House for those specifically, and then the compacting, in talking to our employees and in looking at the market itself, we understand that the newer generation of the workforce is, this will sound bad, but it's not meant bad, is more short-sighted. So they're looking, you know, in the immediate future, not the long term as much. And so that was to address that because they wanted to see more increases in a shorter amount of time to get them, get them to a higher place as they gain tenure, and not waiting 11, 15, 20 years. And so that's why it was compacted down.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So that's the whole presentation. I think we're ready for motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 19 as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item 20.
I wish all those people were here for 19 and 20, because then we would have went first. Matthew Thomas, Chief Deputy for the Panal County Sheriff's Office. So item 20 is specifically to address our detention side. So what we had during COVID is we had the allowance for our exempt staff to work overtime at straight pay. Essentially, what that allowed is for our lieutenants and above to work line level shifts. So you would have either a deputy lieutenant or a detention lieutenant that would go into the jail, and they would fill a regular shift. So they would serve trays, they would work a pod, work transportation, that type of stuff. When COVID, the emergency stuff stopped, the allowance stopped as well to do that. And what we know from our current vacancies on the jail site specifically, because we're struggling there most, is that we have a good vacancy savings, and we want to draw from that to allow our exempt staff to work this overtime at straight pay, to fill those vacancies. And we know, just from the, I'll give you an example from a couple of weeks ago, they were not allowed to do that, and we actually had to lock the jail down because we were at such minimum staffing that we had to lock all the inmates in their cells, and so they stayed there for an entire shift, which of course, we don't like to do because the inmates that are in our jail, we want them to be able to walk around, socialize, you know, be as normal as possible as you can in a jail. So this gives us that allowance. If we allow our exempt staff to work, and typically speaking, it's generally our lieutenant level. Every once in a while, we'll get captains above that. Generally, we're too busy to do that, but that's what we're asking for in this case.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So is there a separate budget allocation for this within the sheriff's office? Have you done the math as to how many dollars you expect to spend?
Vice Chairman Surti, Supervisor Kavanaugh, no. So the budget we're going to draw from is the vacancy savings. We don't know what it looks like because it really depends on the available shifts, right? And there's no real pattern because we've come out of a weird time with COVID, and we're coming back into kind of a more normal time. When we were last normal, we didn't have the amount of vacancies that we have now, if that makes sense. So we will get a look at what it looks like, and then, of course, we work close with Angie on meeting each month as to where we sit and where our expenditures are to ensure that we are in line with our budget, and don't go over in certain areas, and make sure that we're through that vacancy savings, that we're not overspending ourselves.
Okay. Good. That was a good question, though.
Yes.
I'm good.
Okay. I think we're ready for a motion on this one.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 20 as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item number 21, Angie.
Good afternoon. Again, Angie Woods, Director of Office of Budget and Finance. Today, I have an item before you for presentation and discussion of the fiscal year 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. To do so, I have representatives from the Arizona Auditor General's Office, and Walker and Armstrong are our external auditor. I'd like to welcome Carla Wall to the podium to discuss the, her role in the audit of our financial record.
Will we be advancing the slides? Okay. Ah, right here? Oops. I think I hit the wrong thing. Is it just a right click to advance? Good afternoon, Vice Chairman, members of the board. Just to introduce myself, my name is Carla Wall, and I'm a technical manager with the Arizona Auditor General's Office. On behalf of the Arizona Auditor General, we appreciate the opportunity to meet with the board today and join Curtis Bright and Jay Park with Walker and Armstrong in presenting the 2021 audit results to you. Thank you so much for having us. I'd like to say how much we appreciate partnering with Walker and Armstrong, who actually conduct the county's audit, and they're going to be sharing the 2021 audit results with you in a little bit more detail. But before they go into that, we'd like to explain our role as it relates to the audit process. I'm sorry, I did it. Got it. Great. Thank you. Sorry about those technical difficulties here. I think we've got it down now. First, I think it's very helpful to explain a little background on the Auditor General's Office. The Auditor General is a legislative agency made up of nonpartisan staff. We're an independent source of impartial information concerning state and local government entities and programs. Although we're accountable to all 90 legislative members, we report directly to the Joint Legislative Audit Committee, or the JLLAC for short. And this is a bipartisan group of 10 members. Five are appointed from the Senate President, and five members are appointed by the Speaker of the House. And just to remind everyone of a recent statutory change and the purpose for our presence here at today's meeting and at future meetings. As you may know, effective September 29th, 2021, laws 2021, Chapter 427, Section 2, directs the county's governing board to require that its auditors present audit results and any findings to the board in a regular meeting without the use of a consent agenda within 90 days of the audit's completion. And this is a great opportunity for us and Walker and Armstrong, as your auditors, to be in front of you, to provide information about the work performed, and to answer any questions that you may have. The Arizona Auditor General is responsible for conducting annual audits of all Arizona counties, or for causing those audits to be conducted. We sometimes need to contract audits to adjust for our staffing levels and other audit demands, and we select qualified CPA firms with experience in auditing counties and who understand how counties operate within the state of Arizona. And we've contracted with Walker and Armstrong for the county's fiscal years 2020 through 2022 audits. As part of our responsibilities to oversee the county's audit, we work with and provide guidance to Walker and Armstrong, and answer questions throughout the audit process. Once the audit's in its final stages, we review the county's draft audit reports prepared by Walker and Armstrong, and we provide feedback to help ensure the audit report's accuracy and to ensure that they meet applicable standards as part of our due diligence in overseeing So basically, the county is going to get two audits that are done simultaneously. They're going to get a financial statement audit, and they're going to get a federal compliance audit. The financial statement audit includes the auditor's opinion on the county's financial statements that are presented within its annual financial report. The federal compliance audit, which is also referred to as the single audit, that's going to include the required financial statement and federal program internal control and compliance reports, the county's schedule of federal expenditures, and the auditor's opinion on that, and the auditor's opinion on the county's compliance with federal program requirements over each federal program that's required to be audited. Also, the single audit report contains all the findings noted during the financial or federal compliance audits, along with the county's formal responses to them. Curtis and Jay are going to cover those reports in detail as they relates to the county's fiscal year 2021 audit momentarily. We also feel that it's important for everyone to understand the actual standards that auditors must follow when conducting all county audits. State and federal laws require Arizona counties to receive annual financial and compliance audits, including audits of federal programs. And those audits are conducted in accordance with three main sets of standards, which are shown here on the slide. First are the U.S. generally accepted auditing standards, which are issued by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. These are the same standards that CPA firms follow when conducting many of their audits of private businesses and other governmental entities. Second, for audits of most governmental entities, auditors must also follow government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. And these require auditors to review and report on significant financial reporting, internal control, and compliance with certain laws and regulations. And third, county's federal programs are audited following requirements based upon federal laws, which is basically the Single Audit Act, and that's stipulated through the uniform guidance. All of these standards require auditors to remain independent, have integrity, and perform their tasks with objectivity. As far as board communications go, the auditing standards that we just mentioned require auditors to make certain communications to you as a governing body charged with overseeing the county's operations, including its financial reporting and compliance objectives. Our communications with you regarding the audits consist of the reports once they are issued. We email you when we issue the county's audit reports, once they're finalized by Walker and Armstrong, and that email includes links to the reports as well as our report highlights. You should have already received those 2021 audit reports that were issued back in August, and those reports are also still available on our website. You and your management team may also access resources that are available on our website. Types of resources there include guidance for financial statement and expenditure limitation reporting, user guides for understanding information contained in financial reports, and reports on internal control and compliance, fraud prevention alerts, budget forms, frequently asked questions, and there's also some webinars and just guidance on various topics that you may be interested in. One final thing before I turn it over to Walker and Armstrong. I previously mentioned our report highlights that are linked in the email that we send when the reports are actually issued. They contain a snapshot of highlights from the year's audit, including links to the reports for the current and prior years. These highlights are also going to give you an idea of primary revenue sources and how they were spent, a recap of the year's financial highlights and their effect on financial position, a summary of any audit findings and recommendations, and they're also going to include some links to some of those resources that I just mentioned. And they're also going to include some links to some of those resources that I just mentioned. So with that, I want to thank you very much for your time today. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Walker and Armstrong, and they're going to discuss the 2021 audit results with you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Vice Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jay Park, and I'm a partner with the CPA firm of Walker and Armstrong. And I have with me another partner, Curtis Bright, who will be covering part of the presentation. Want to thank Ms. Woods for the introduction, as well as Ms. Wall from the Auditor General's Office. And as mentioned, we're going to walk through a PowerPoint presentation. And we are going to keep this brief. There is a tremendous amount of information that could be covered, okay? So what we're going to really do is focus on the highlights. So as part of the audit, we issued in early August two primary deliverables. The first one is something called the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And it looks something like this. It's about 196 pages, a lot there. And then, we also issued a document called the Single Audit Reporting Package, a lot smaller, about 22 pages long. And so what we're going to do is we're going to cover the highlights of both of those deliverables through the PowerPoint presentation. And then, I'm also going to discuss a letter that is addressed to the board. And what we've done is we've just highlighted the contents of the letter in the presentation. And that way, we're just covering all the significant aspects of that letter in this presentation. All right. So what I'm going to do is start off with the summary of audit results. And again, a lot of information here. So what we're going to do is just cover some of the highlights. And so the first slide here is the summary. Within the large 196-page document, there are four pages that contain the independent auditor's report. And in that report, there's a paragraph that contains our opinion on the financial statements. And that's the first bullet there. And I'm pleased to report that we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. So what that means is that, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with the accounting rules. Those accounting rules are called generally accepted accounting principles. If there was a departure from that rules and we would, from those rules, then we would have modified our opinion, and we would report that back to you. So again, an unmodified or a clean opinion. If you were to look at the 2021 report compared to prior years, you're going to see some changes primarily to the implementation of a new accounting standard. It's called GASB 84 on fiduciary funds. And it provides additional information on what's called your investment trust fund, which is money handled by the Treasurer's Office. So more information on the inflows and outflows, not only for the county, but also some of the separate legal entities, such as the school districts and special districts. So that's something that we want to highlight as part of our presentation. Bullet point number three, we're going to go through this in more detail. Just going to cover a few highlights here. First bullet is you have total cash of just under $300 million. That's a healthy increase of about $58 million from prior year, okay? So from a cash perspective, you're looking good from a liquidity standpoint. If we were to look at your cash as a percentage of your total expenses, it's 93.04%, okay? So looking good there from a liquidity standpoint. Another way of looking at liquidity and financial health is just to look at the general fund. And there's a concept of something called fund balance, which is the difference between assets, what you own and what others owe you, compared to liabilities, which is what you owe others. Well, the difference between those two for the general fund is called fund balance. Your general fund has $63 million of unreserved fund balance. As a percentage of the general fund's expenditures, it's 25%, okay? So that's a healthy percentage to have for fund balance. Wouldn't want to go much below 20%, okay? So 25% is a good metric there. Total liabilities, you have a total pension liability of $256 million. You're going to see a substantial change in that liability in fiscal year 2022 because you issued $89 million worth of bonds to pay down the PSPRS liability, as well as the corp liability. So you're not going to see that liability go down until fiscal year 2022, though. So next time we present the audit. All right. One of the things that we spend a lot of time on is internal controls and compliance. And bullet point number four relates to internal control matters. We did have one material weakness and four significant deficiencies in internal control during the 2021 audit. And then, there were three prior year findings that were corrected during the 2021 audit. So I'm going to talk a little bit more detail about those findings later in the presentation. This slide is a summary of your assets, deferred outflows, liabilities, deferred inflows, and net position. Not going to spend a lot of time on this, okay? This is a high-level summary of one of the primary financial statements in the audit. And so what we've done here is summarized it here. It's page 25 of the audit. So we have total assets for 2021 of just over $1 billion. We have total liabilities of $670 million, and we have the difference between the two. Now, one of the things I want to point out there is that the unrestricted deficit number there of 85 million is a deficit, okay? Because we have a lot of our resources tied up in long-term assets called capital assets. And then, there's also a fair amount of money that's restricted as well. And so we do have a deficit as it relates to unrestricted net position. However, I mentioned earlier that your general fund has a positive $63 million of fund balance, okay? So when we're looking at the county on a more short-term perspective, you're looking healthy, okay? And part of the reason we have this deficit is because of the pension obligations, which are pretty substantial. All right. The next slide here is also a net position. This is focusing on business-type activities. This is your airport and the inmate fund. And so we have total assets of, for 2021, of $8.2 million. So not, you know, not a whole lot of change there. You have a positive net position of just under $7.6 million. So overall, cash investments increased by $768 million. And that's really the largest change there. All right. I'm going to hand over the presentation to Curtis, who's going to walk you through a few graphs and charts. And then, I'm going to circle back a little bit in a few minutes.
So we wanted to go into some of your non-current liabilities a little bit. As Jay mentioned, the bonds payable, during 2021, you issued the $89 million for PSPRS. We just wanted to point out that the net pension obligation is also reporting the same PSPRS obligation because the PSPRS pension liability is a year behind. So next year, you'll see that pay down of that net pension liability. So we just wanted to show the makeup of the non-current liabilities. The major change is the pension liability increased $36.5 million from 2020, and then the bonds increased from the issuance of the bonds. If we look at the revenues of the county as a whole, so we're looking at total government revenues, the largest change is your revenues increased $86 million from 2020. A bulk of that is going to be from your operating grants and your capital grants due to COVID-related grants that were received during the 2021. So your operating grants increased about $21 million due to COVID funding increases that the county received. Overall, your taxes increased $22 million. The major changes in that for the year, you received additional sales taxes of about $4.5 million. Sales taxes from the state, shared sales taxes about just under $8 million. And then, your property tax assessed of an increase of about $2.8 million from 2020. So we find it important on the financial to kind of look at a trend of kind of where things have been over the last five years. I don't want to spend a lot of time because you're, most of this is just the time of, as you're, as the various economy changes. But it's good to see kind of where your various revenue sources have come over the last five years and the changes for them. It's easier to see in a financial or in a graph versus just looking at numbers. On the expense side of the county, overall, total expenses increased $38.6 million. And a bulk of that is because when you receive the COVID funding, most of that is cost reimbursement grants. And so you spent the money for COVID-related responses. So we'd anticipate that increase because of the funding that was received by the county. Overall, your general government increased. The general government function of the county increased due to the CDBG grant, as well as some airport development that was received during the year. Public safety increased. The CARES Act money that was received in 2020, half of it was received and, half of it was spent in 2020, and the rest of it was spent in 2021. And that's related, you used the CARES Act money to pay for the additional sheriff's funding and salaries to help cover some of those costs. And then, overall, your welfare increased due to some, again, CARES Act funding that was received and some CDBG, which is a community development block grant, the federal funding that was received during the year. And again, just to kind of see the, a visual of where the expenses are, most of the expenses outside of the general fund really follow the grant funding that's available throughout the, available to the county. So it's easy to see it as a graph instead of numbers. And then, just overall, the county, we wanted to show the last five years, the blue bar being your total revenues, your red bar being your total expenses, and the green being your change in net position. So it's easy to see that overall, the county is doing well about spending within the resources that they receive, not overspending the grant or the money that is received by the county and being responsible for the funding that is received by the county.
All right. We're almost wrapped up with the presentation. The next slide here, a few things that we are required under our standards to cover with the board. And so a couple of things really important. Number two, difficulties encountered in performing the audit. I am pleased to report that we had no difficulties. The team was great to work with in terms of getting us information that we needed. So just overall, the audit went well. We did have one adjustment in particular that was for receivable. So there was a correction there that was for over $0.5 million. So that's bullet point number three. As part of issuing the audit, bullet point number four, we did obtain a letter from management just telling us in writing that they believe the financial statements are fairly presented, and they've informed us everything that's pertinent to our audit. And so we did get that letter prior to issuing the final report in August. We're not aware of any consultations with other accountants. And so that's really it in terms of required communications. Going to move into some of the findings. We are actually done with the large report here. And now, we're moving into the, what's called the Single Audit Reporting Package. And so in that report, we do have some findings. When we perform an audit, we perform a financial statement audit, as well as an audit of compliance for federal awards. And so as part of that, we evaluate internal controls over financial reporting, as well as internal controls applicable to those federal awards. And so we do have a few findings here. The first one, this is a repeat from prior years, and it relates to the timing of the closing of the accounting records and just having the accounts ready for audits in a timely manner. So as we move through the audit process, we didn't have a whole lot in terms of audit adjustments. So by the time we started our audit in April/May timeframe, the records are pretty clean. But it's a process. So your year enclosed in June 2021. And so our recommendation is to have more timely account reconciliations so the board and constituents of the county have more accurate information in a more timely manner. It'll also speed up the process in terms of issuing the audit, okay? So that's the first finding there. Second finding relates to cash reconciliation, again, a repeat. And it's somewhat of a carryover over that first finding, which is, but it's more specific to cash and having timely reconciliations of the cash accounts. It's really focused primarily on the reconciliation of the treasurer's system to the finance department's records, as well as the payroll bank accounts. A third finding, significant deficiency. It relates to amounts that are owed to the county. And our recommendation here is that there are, there's a more accurate analysis of amounts owed, particularly through the court system and other miscellaneous receivables, so that when we close the year, that those balances are truly representative of the act, of the amounts owed to the county. And also, as I mentioned earlier, we did note about a $500,000 adjustment to AR. So that was something that needed to be corrected as part of the audit. Number four relates to payroll. We had two out of 64 transactions, which are unable to locate time cards. And then, for four out of 64, there were missing signatures on the time cards that we did have. And then, the last finding here is specific to the ERAP program, Emergency Rental Assistance Program. So this is one of the federal programs that we audited. And so the county passed money through to a state agency. And as part of that, when you pass money through to another agency, you have a requirement to monitor that agency to make sure that they're spending the money in accordance with the federal regulations. And so we found that that wasn't being done until we pointed it out as this is a federal requirement to do this. And then, the county started doing it at that point. So, but because it wasn't being done during the 2021 fiscal period, it's a finding for purposes of our audit. Okay. That concludes the presentation. So at this point, what we'd like to do is open it up to any questions that the board may have.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you mentioned the $0.5 million error in accounts receivable, was that one transaction or several?
That particular transaction was one transaction.
What specifically was that transaction, do you recall?
That was a...
Curtis, you remember the federal, that was a grant?
It was a federal grant that the cash was received and recorded as revenue as well, or it was recorded as a receivable in 2019. And then, in 2020, when it was received, it was also recorded as revenue again. The receivable was never removed.
But duplication of revenue.
Okay. And then, well, I guess the other question would be for Angie. Maybe that's a question for another day.
Go ahead.
Go. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think part, I'm with Supervisor Kavanaugh. I mean, when you look at some of these things, I know that we've been short-staffed in a lot of our areas. And I'm wondering from Angie if that's been some of our issues is being short-staffed, is creating some of those issues, especially in the timely manner that you're talking about. You know, we're not getting some of these reports done in a timely manner. And I'm just curious as to whether or not that's a matter of being short-staffed in the past.
So as you recall, Vice Chair, members of the board, I was put into this position very recently, about seven months ago. What I have found is that the staff is doing a really good job of ensuring the accuracy of the finance, the reporting of the, the accounting and reporting of the actuals. And I also found that historically, the finance department has centrally taken on the role and responsibility of correcting all of the issues that have been found. The staff, the level of detail that the staff is looking at really needs to be pushed to the departments. We have begun to transition and lean more into a shared services model, having our departments do more of the monthly reconciliation as recommended by the audits, the external auditors. But in doing so, we're having to educate those staff members. We're having to... We're having to, at some points, bring them into my office or into my area and sit one-on-one with them to ensure that the accounting and the detail is there. So it takes a little bit longer, which is part of our finding, but in reality, we're still doing things very, very accurately. We are in the process of evaluating the staff, evaluating the roles that we have in the staff. As you're aware, we have an internal audit for financial reporting going on. I anticipate some recommendations to come out of that internal audit that probably mirrors what our external auditors are saying as well. So my anticipation is we will come back to you to implement some of the recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, that covered mine that I didn't ask.
Okay, I don't have any questions, and this is not an item for public input, but we do have someone who would like to speak on this, and he asks so politely. I feel inclined, perhaps he has a question. So rather than have him go last, Mr. Ravelis, did you have a question for these folks?
Roberto Ravelis of Gold Canyon, and yes, Mr. Vice Chairman. In the interest of promoting confidence in the workings of the board and the county taxpayers, I keep hearing in my neighborhood, for example, questions raised about two major things in particular. Right now, currently, the regional transportation matter that was invalidated by the Arizona Supreme Court, has that been taken into account by this current audit? And secondly, a matter that I personally have been concerned about, that we have a head of a department who obviously incurs expenses and receives openly, understand, receives revenues from non-official activities and related to the largest consumer of the taxpayers, the sheriff's office. So my question is, the findings of weakness and deficiencies in this general comprehensive audit leads me to raise concern that we need to have a concentrated audit on the major user of the taxpayers, the sheriff's office, because to me, it seems like it would be difficult for a sheriff's office to be receiving grants authorized by the board, justifiably used by the sheriff's department, but also he has a unique personality, this is unique to the current head of that department, engaging in nationally acclaimed, quite frankly, partisan political activities that cost revenue, but also are generating some income for this current director of this department. So my question is, is there a way in which the taxpayers can be reassured that these audits have covered those two items in particular? The invalidated tax on the regional Prop 469, for example, that I personally am enthusiastically supportive of. But secondly, the continuing use of the sheriff's resources in some clearly partisan activities. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those are my major questions and concerns.
Okay, I'm guessing that those questions are not for these folks. Leo, the RTA has set up the function on its own as a separate entity apart from the county, is it not?
That is correct, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the Penile Regional Transportation Authority is a separate entity, of which we are a member of the governing body, but it is not on our financial books and records. There are some support services that we do provide an IGA with the PRTA, so we do have some transactions with them. And so those would be included in our records, but not, you know, the large plan and the funding and, you know, the $80 million plus that's sitting at ADOR. Those are not on our records.
And the second part of that question, yeah, that's something we don't usually delve into. If that's something that this board would ask or, I don't know. Like I said, that operates separately also, since that's a separate elected position, but they do do their budget through us. It would almost be like a personal audit of the sheriff rather than an audit of... Mr. Keller, what do you think?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, before Chris, obviously, as Mr. Ravelis has mentioned, this is, it's a large expenditure, and you see in the public safety category in the presentation. So as a part of a comprehensive audit, sheriff's office's expenses, both general fund and grant funds, would be included in the audit, and the auditors can speak to more detail on how they calculate risk and materiality and sampling and testing. But we have in the past as well directed our internal auditors to do special financial audits and performance audits of the sheriff's office in different aspects related to that. Mr. Ravelis, you might recall some of those in the previous years. And so the board does have prerogative with the internal audit function to ask for those special audits as well.
And could outside entities ask that as well? I was just reading Governor DeSantis, who, that's a governor, someone's looking into how is he shipping the folks to the sanctuary cities, something like that. That would kind of, you know, there again, the governor's a separate thing of... So anyway, I don't have answers, I'm just asking. Maybe this is something you can do a little bit of a report and give us some options on that, if it's anything anyone would want to look into.
Sure.
And like I said, I don't think the auditors here ran into that situation. So Angie shaking her head, no.
So our attorney had something he wanted to...
Yeah. Just wanted to say, in regards to the sheriff's office, in terms of our audits, we do not necessarily focus on any one department unless there is a reason to. So sometimes, as your independent auditors, we are directed to, just through our inquiries. In terms of the financial information, we do evaluate certain information related to the sheriff's office, such as budget versus actual information, to see if there's any significant fluctuations. So something like that would be part of our audit, but getting into a lot more detail, again, unless we're directed, we have not gotten into much more detail.
But if there was a big, giant sucking sound, as they say, then you would see some irregularities there.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yes. And so we would inquire further as to what's occurring. So if we're 20% over budget, then we're going to ask the question as to why and dig deeper into it.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, we do engage external auditors, ProTivity, if you recall, and they, I think, at least once, maybe twice a year, come and provide a report to this board. And one of the action items that they do present to this board is their upcoming proposed audit schedule. And that usually does focus on various departments or elected offices that they will be undertaking or that they suggest they undertake an audit of because it hasn't been done in four years, five years, whatever. And I know at times, this board has suggested someone be moved to the top sooner for whatever reason. So I think, if I'm not wrong, I think they normally come in the January time period with their proposal for the coming year. So at that point in time, you know, if that's still an issue, you would have that ability to have them focus on a certain department. I can recall, they have done one in the sheriff's office, but I don't know how long ago it was. And I know we've recently done one on the procurement department, you know, about a year ago. So I mean, they do focus on various departments, and not just the financials, but also there are procedures in place sometimes. So that may be something you want to consider.
Okay, thank you. Yes? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In terms of the audit of grants, we talked about a half-million-dollar error, and the citizen is talking about potential errors within the sheriff's office. When you do an audit, how granular do you get? Are you looking at the macro level to see that the account balances in the reporting? You're not looking at transactional detail, you're looking at simply the numbers, is that correct?
Well, that's a great question, Supervisor. And so our approach to testing federal awards, so when we're working on compliance, we are focused on federal awards. So not necessarily awards coming just from the state of Arizona. Sometimes it's passed through the state of Arizona. And we don't look at everything. We do take a risk approach, and so our standards say that if you have this, this, and this, then you must audit this type of scenario. So for the most part, there's not a whole lot of judgment, and it's really based on dollar size. So if you were to look at the audit, you're going to notice that oftentimes, we're auditing some of the larger federal programs. So more recently, it's been the CARES Act, and then subsequently, ARPA money. In terms of the detailed testing of those federal programs, and for fiscal year 2021, it was seven that we audited, in terms of the level of detail, we do get down to the transaction level. And that's something that we're required to do. So what we're interested in doing is evaluating whether or not that department is complying with, for example, allowable cost principles. So if you get a grant that is specified for a specific purpose, then what we are very interested to know is that it was spent for that purpose. We also have to evaluate internal controls. So was it approved? Was there a purchase order issued in advance? Was it approved by the department head, that type of thing? So our sample size can go anywhere from 25 all the way up to, you know, over 60 for one of those federal programs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is that everything then? I see this is, we're going to ask for a motion.
Actually, it's just discussion.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, yeah, I'm down here. Okay, 21, I was back up on 20.
I'm making a motion.
I'm ready for lunch. My sugar's crashing. Yeah. Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure being here today. Great rest of your day.
Thank you.
Discussion of former or future board member requests, anything? If not, then we can adjourn this meeting.